January 21st, 2013. We call the meeting to order. Quorum is present. All members are present at 6:07. All right. This is the workshop session. And we have a presentation of wastewater analysis report. Mr. Sly?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had some preliminary discussions with the MUD as they're talking about the various alternatives that they are having with wastewater treatment in our community. And as you know, you're -- the town is responsible for those types of services in the pit. And I just felt like it was -- would be an appropriate thing to do to have the MUD's consultant, who's doing an extensive review of their options and their existing plant, to update the council so that you would have an idea of what it is they're contemplating. And I think the MUD manager, Jennifer McKnight, has provided you an estimated timeline for actions that have either been taken or what they intended to take in the future. And I think between Jennifer and their consultant, they have an update for you this evening to kind of give you an idea of what it is they're trying to get accomplished. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jennifer McKnight, and she can introduce their consultant.
Good evening. I appreciate y'all letting us come tonight and kind of catch you up on what we know so far. Y'all know me, I'm Jennifer, and I want to introduce the engineers that are here tonight from the Wallace Group. The Wallace Group is an award-winning engineering firm. They're kind of based out of central Texas, Waco. And Keven is actually from their local Dallas office. One thing before we go there, I was asked to announce that we do have a quorum present so -- of the MUD Board, so I did want to announce that. I passed out to you all a kind of an estimated timeline as to what we're looking at. We are hoping to, you know, stay ahead of the schedule, definitely not beyond the schedule. But I know from my conversations with Mike, that's something that y'all might -- were interested in is kind of what kind of a schedule we're looking at. I'm going to turn it over to the engineers. And just to kind of introduce you, Keven Glover is here. He's from the Dallas office with the Wallace Group. And Scott Wetzel is here. He's kind of the wastewater guru. He's based out of their Round Rock office. So I'll kind of turn it over to them and let them do a little presentation and then take any of your questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Hopefully, we can answer some of your questions and any concerns that you might have. But one thing we would like to say is this is a very preliminary study. So far, we're just now getting into the really details of the plant and everything. So there's a lot of things that can be -- that can and probably will change. Some -- in fact, some of the things that we had on our presentation to a certain extent where we're getting to question because of additional things that we found out. But what I'd like to do is move forward. Some of the work that we have started up, we have first, we did a topographic survey of the equipment out there. When we look at the plans, there was some concerns about what the elevations were. We performed that. We've also performed calculations on the size of the various units to get an idea of their flows and their capacities. We reviewed existing earlier permits and their parameters and what involved there. Plus, we've conducted meetings with the staff. I've always found out a long time ago, if you want to find out a lot of what's wrong with a plant, you talk with the people that run it. And so we've done that and got a lot of good information from that. Give you an indication of what we have here. Let me go ahead and do this. The original design for the plant was for a design population of 10,000. It had a BOD strength, TSS raw water, and a raw BOD strength of 180. So you had a 10-15 permit. And it was designed with 180 milligrams per liter as force of concentration with a queue flow of 1.75 million gallons per day. Under current conditions, since then, we found out, look at the city, the town's master plans there, we're looking at a build-out population of really 14,000. The permit has changed from a 10-15 to a 5-10. And our raw sewage is really actually based on test results, is running between 200 and 240, maximum of 240. So you can see there's a big change there. And the flow has come up quite a bit. In reality, though, these are design conditions for the population and build-out conditions. The plant currently is flowing at about .7 million gallons a day. So even though these are higher, we're not at that point yet. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Scott. He's giving you more of the details on the plant itself.
Good evening. Scott Wetzel with the Wallace Group. I want to keep it real informal. So if you have any questions as I go through this, you can stop me at any point, and I'll do my best to answer them. I'm going to touch on generalities. If you want to get into some specifics, we sure can do that. But I want to just touch on the main points. Give you a little background. Last fall, we started the process, as Keven mentioned, of taking a look at the wastewater treatment plant to determine what, if any, bottlenecks existed in the processes and what the limiting factors were out there and how things could be improved at the plant. And so we did a real cursory review at that time to look at the processes and identify what were the glaring issues with the plant. And in November, we presented that to the MUD Board and discussed what some of the issues were and what some of the options that existed for them, that existed. We presented that to them as well. The main thing at that point that we emphasized was that was a very cursory review. And really, what was warranted was for us to take a deeper look at the unit processes in depth and do a lot more investigation to be able to really nail down what issues existed at the plant, what very specific options existed, and what were the most viable options, and then what that would cost. We're in the middle of that right now. In fact, we're about a third of the way through that process. And when we get that done, we will present a detailed report to the board for their review and discuss it with them and present it at a board meeting. So what we did is we looked at some of the key components of the plant, primarily where most of the treatment takes place, in the aeration basins, because that seemed to be one of the places that the plant was having some issues. We also looked at clarification, which are these three circular structures, their final filtration, and their disinfection system over here. We didn't look at a lot of the headworks processes, the sludge management, that type of thing, which is what we're doing now in the preliminary engineering report in detail. And what we really found was that the plant is not currently at its capacity. It still has some capacity left in it. But obviously, Trophy Club's growing at a very accelerated and fast pace. And so planning steps need to be taken now so that upgrades to the plant can occur to keep in front of that. So we're going to have detailed information once we finish the preliminary engineering report. We've done some of the calculations. We've completed our fieldwork. We're now in the process of looking at what options exist for addressing the aeration basins, additional clarifications, possibly looking at retrofitting. Right now, they have a suspended growth activated sludge process. We're looking at what other processes could be retrofitted into these basins with the addition of another basin or two to expand the capacity of the plant within the same footprint. So at this point, I don't have a lot of details to share with you. Given another month or two, that will become very clear what their options are. And we would have a lot more detail that we can share with everyone. But that's kind of an overview of where we are and what we're doing and what the timeline for completing the assessment and the analysis of the plant in order to present that to the board. So unless there are specific questions, then that's kind of where we're at and what we're looking at. And just to give you an idea, the plant, and Keven touched on this a little bit in his discussion, and that is that the numbers that were presented to the board upon that cursory review of the wastewater treatment plant back in November, those numbers were based on total flows, counting recycle within the plant, INI within the plant, and the actual flows coming into the plant. So that numbers and the numbers that were in that presentation to the board actually was kind of a worst-case scenario. Since that time, we've gone back and we've been able to look at a year's worth of data, primarily the last six months of data. And those numbers are not as high as the very short window that we looked at back when we did that other study. In fact, the flow coming into the plant on average is around 700,000 gallons per day. So it's not at that critical threshold yet. But certainly, planning needs to be taking place, and that's what's going on right now. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you might have or anything for Keven.
Mayor, I just want to point a clarification. And Scott, I don't know if this is you or Keven or Jennifer, but a month or so ago, you know, the council had a discussion about, you know, the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant being approaching a point where, you know, permitting was going to be an issue, as an example, for continued growth and that kind of thing. Can you verify and put to rest where they stand, where the wastewater treatment plant stands as it relates to what their current capacity is versus what's actually coming through? And I know you just addressed that.
Right.
But I just want to confirm that so -- and put everybody at ease.
Right. Well, there's -- without making it complicated and without drawing out an answer to your question, I'll keep it as concise as I can. There's a couple different components to wastewater treatment. One is hydraulic, how much water is coming into the plant. The other is the loadings on the plant for organics and inorganics. And those are related, but yet separate. And so from a hydraulic standpoint, I don't see you for -- I don't see the MUD exceeding their hydraulic capacity of the plant in a very, very long time. From a loading standpoint, that's a more critical issue, and that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. But they're still not at that critical point. I've run some rough numbers, and I don't want to get into too much number -- throwing numbers out there because it really won't mean that much to you. But the plant is, it still probably has, at current past growth rates within the city and within the MUD, it has probably about two years somewhere in that neighborhood, maybe a little longer. But that's just, you know, a projection with me standing up here. We'll know a lot more once we're done with the preliminary engineering report. But it's about two years, give or take.
Two years to what?
From now. That the total build-out of the contributing area that the MUD accepts that wastewater and it goes to the plant, two years before it would reach its organic and inorganic loading rate. And that's just based off of looking at what past history was.
But if you, if it's two years, and it's going to take probably that long to get to the point of actually having something new, isn't that a problem?
Well, it's not unusual that...
Yeah, I thought you had to be at a certain point and be in design with TCEQ. You know, you have to be doing it a certain amount ahead. And if you're telling me we're going to hit the wall in two years, that sounds like a problem.
Well, the two years is the planning phase. I mean, we're in the planning phase now. So that is the first step in that process. So it's not, that is not a problem. Because if you were, if they were not doing anything, and then two years came and went, and you know, it could be three years, could be four years, I don't know for certain at this stage. But the first step is planning. That's the process that's going on. So right now, the MUD is in good shape, and they're taking this first and necessary step in planning for the necessary improvements to the plant to address that.
Thank you.
Keven, do you have anything to add to that? And this isn't unusual. I mean, this is really pretty typical of the process for expanding wastewater treatment plant.
The only thing I would say is that we're also looking at various alternatives on how to phase or step in system. So there's some things that we're looking at because it's, you know, you can't just automatically take the plant out of service and build a new one. You have to ongoing. And some of the facilities that Scott's looking at and equipment allows us to stair-step the thing. So, you know, if we do start again, we're already planning to a certain extent on that to take care of some of those problems. But, you know, my experience with the TCEQ is that we're in good shape as long as we're planning, going up there and moving forward, we're in good shape. The problem would be, like you said, if we weren't doing anything.
Right.
Yeah. And not to belabor the point, but if the MUD were just sitting back and waiting for the point where they hit that crisis level, which right now, none of us know exactly when that would be, then that would be a critical issue because then you would be scrambling to react rather than be proactive. And the MUD's being proactive by planning now and putting things in place so that they can have the infrastructure up and running when that point comes, when the loadings on the plant are at a point where they need, the plant needs to be expanded to accept the extra waste that's being sent to them.
Thank you.
Bill's had a question. I saw that. But I wanted to add, too, that I think kind of directly, maybe we'll answer your question, Ms. Connie, is TCEQ does require that we submit a compliance plan when we get to 75% capacity on average daily flow. We're, as he said, we're at .73, 700,000 gallons. That would be at about a million gallons that they would ask that we submit to them what's our plan. So we have plenty of time. We're already ahead of the curve because we're getting that plan in place. And we will have that submitted to them way before we get to the 75% mark. So if you look at the schedule, it's basically in two years, we'll be up and operating. And I think kind of what they're saying is, they think the hydraulic loading right now, we have two more years if we did nothing. So by the time we get to that point, when we would have hit the, now it's time to expand, we're already going to have the expansion complete. So I think we're well ahead of the curve right now.
Thank you. Bill DeChambeau?
I would like you, if you would, Scott, to expand upon your comment that the, or amplify your comment, that the possibility of expanding the plant within its current footprint.
Yeah, there's a number, there are a lot of options by which to expand a plant than just to continue to add the processes that you already have out there. That can be done, and it just takes more land to be able to do that. Or you can sometimes, and many times, you can take the existing basins that are out there, retrofit them with different technologies like membrane treatment processes, which do have a lot higher capacity, give a much better effluent, but take up a lot less space. And so for one instance, it doesn't mean this is the route that we'll go because we'll do a cost feasibility analysis on this, too. But you could change these from being aerated suspended growth chambers, which just takes a certain volume of tankage to be able to treat the amount of wastewater that's coming into the plant. You could retrofit those with some type of, or supplement them with some type of membrane treatment, which can produce, treat a lot more flow in a much tighter space. So, you know, for instance, we could take this existing footprint and roughly double the capacity of the plant by retrofitting those basins. That would be one option. But part of the decision process that would be involved in that is doing a cost analysis so that the MUD would be able to look at, well, what are the operations and capital costs to do that? And what's the most feasible, given the land issues, the cost issues, and the processes? But what Keven was mentioning, and I think this is kind of important to keep in mind, is that we can do this in a staged process as well so that the MUD's not being faced with all of the costs all at once to expand the plant to ultimate build-out capacity. And by doing that, you could have dual treatment trains. You could have one basin initially retrofitted with, say, a membrane and treat in there while the other basin continues to treat with a suspended growth process. You'll increase the flow of the plant maybe by about 50%. And then the next phase, which would be Phase II construction, you would retrofit the other basin with another membrane. That now has roughly doubled this, and I'm throwing out some numbers, it won't be exact, but you would have roughly doubled the capacity of the plant. Meanwhile, you've had to acquire no additional property to be able to do that. And you've been able to achieve that while keeping the plant fully functional, all in the same footprint, without having to get more land.
So you have the capacity now that you wouldn't have to build an additional treatment section in order to retrofit one of the basins, is that correct?
You probably would, just to maintain the existing operation. You would probably, you probably would still add for redundancy purposes. You would still add another basin, but you wouldn't have to add two or three more basins. And you could add another basin to keep these fully operational while you were in construction. Because the one thing you can't have is that the plant's capacity or ability to treat the full wastewater coming into the plant would be diminished because then they would have trouble meeting their permit limits.
Certainly.
I was going to say, that was one of my questions, is that, you know, does capacity of plant taking one of their aerator basins offline? And they still have capacity to do that? Or are you going to have to add an aerator base?
You would add an aerator base. And it's always nice, it's always a good idea to have, in this situation, three anyway because if you need to take any one down, you still have the two that are capable of meeting the full treatment load of the plant. And so that would, especially with the third one meeting the future peak capacity, then that would give you the flexibility of maintenance and treating any problems by taking one offline.
You mentioned you're, partially through your analysis there or so, going through the clarifiers and stuff like that, do they have the capacity to take one offline and retrofit two because the aging clarifiers and the equipment and the costs associated with all that?
Yeah. I haven't gotten to the point of knowing exactly how many clarifiers, but there's an old clarifier that's situated right in this area. And in order to expand this type of a process that's there now, we would probably put that new basin, new equipment in that clarifier. But we would probably put that one back online so that they would have four, and they could take one down at any one point to be able to treat the waste and not lose capacity of the plant.
I guess the other general question I had, Mike sent us a note, looks like the MUD directors and staff met with TRA briefly with their plant. And obviously, that their plant has a lot newer, has a lot more capacity. It just seemed like, from the notes, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that they just did a cost analysis, say, the current cost of treating with the plant right now is substantially less than what we would, our residents would have to pay if we tied in the TRA system. But is any plans at all, doing with any analysis on what the TRA, you know, tying into the TRA system is and the cost analysis, that short term and long term?
That will be part of the analysis and the report, and that will be included in the report. I was not part of that discussion, so I'll let Keven address it. But that will be a component of the preliminary engineering report that we're working on now, that that will be addressed. And you'll be able to look at what, updating this plant with a couple different options versus hooking into TRA system and sending it directly to them, what all of that would look like from both a infrastructure perspective as well as a cost perspective so that an informed decision can be made. But that is part of the assessment that will take place.
And that is, we did meet with TRA this last week, and they're getting us some numbers this week on different costs and different information that we can work with. They're $4.36 a thousand gallons is what they're charging now, their gross, that's fairly high. But we haven't compared it to what the others would be, but that's part of our analysis. We'll be, if we don't think we're going to do our due diligence, we look at as many alternatives as we can, that should be one of them. So we just, we are looking at that, but we're not far off long to do a whole lot, be able to give a lot of information. Plus, TRA should give us more information hopefully this week.
Well, just the cost of it, you know, I guess what I look at is cost of existing plant, cost of possible land acquisition, possible updates, not now, but in the future, the cost of heightened TCEQ requirements that are right now just kind of a magic wand out there. But I don't see it getting less strict.
Well, it's not. And, you know, and it, like I said, if TCEQ puts more criteria, that's going to be on TRA, whoever goes to...
Right.
To give you an idea...
They're spreading that cost over a lot more volume of units.
And so that's one of the things we're going to be looking at. Just to give you an idea, though, at 1.4 million gallons a day, at $4.36, that's about $2.2 million a year that you would be paying just for treatment. And so that gives you an idea. But we have not been able to go back and, or haven't had time to go back and relook. We have the city's, the MUD's budget, and we'll go back and relook at those things to do a good cost analysis to say, yeah, you know, on a short, I think, in a short-term basis, what, on a long-term basis. And then our job is to give as much information we can to the board so they can make an educated decision.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure both, everything was in play because I think that's at least, you know, analyzing that cost, especially over the long-term basis.
And if I understand correctly, that for something was for the treatment, not for the buy-in cost or the admin cost?
That's correct. There's additional buy-in costs?
Yeah, that's...
I might just add, too, I'm sorry, that there'll be two components to the cost assessment that's done in the study. One will be a capital cost so that the MUD and everyone can look at the document and say, oh, well, here's the amount of infrastructure, each option, TRA, expanding the plant, whatever it may be. Each option will cost this much to construct. And then there'll be a second component to that, which will be a life cycle cost analysis, which will look at annualized cost to operate or pay into and maintain whatever system, whether it's TRA or whether it's an expansion of the existing plant with the capacity. So you'll be able to look at an annualized cost and say, on an annual basis, each option will cost this much. And that'll help you look at a 20-year life cycle cost to know that over 20 years, that will cost you on an annualized basis a certain amount of money.
I had one more question for Keven. As you're doing your analysis, your cost analysis and your studies, will you also evaluate offloading the Solana component and its impact on the requirements as they apply to the...
That's another area that is up in the air that sort of give us a little problem because you don't know for sure, do you add or do you not or whatever? But yes, that will be taken in consideration.
Because there's a connector point that would appear to be pretty close to the station number five, which would allow it to be offloaded.
Well, the other thing, and I'm just making an assumption that you've already kind of met with Carolyn, and Carolyn's kind of given you growth projections from where we're at because the last couple of years, I mean, especially residential, we're on a very steep pitch. Plus, that doesn't count any possible commercial growth that could come online within the next five years fairly easily.
We met with Mike and Stephen and Carolyn. I did. And so we got a lot of good information for the city and for the town, and that's what we're putting that information into our projections for population growth.
I don't have anything further. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks for helping out.
Okay. Item two, discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on the regular session council agenda for January 21st. Anything anybody wanted to bring up at this point or talk about? Okay. Item three, briefing of planning and zoning items on the February 4th regular session. Carolyn? Just while Carolyn's setting that up, we have the replat of Lot Two R Block B to Lot Two R One and Two R Two Block B, Trophy Wood Business Center. The preliminary plat, final plat and site plan of Lot One Block A, the Church at Trophy Lakes. Eleven point six oh three acres located at eight hundred Trophy Club Drive. And the site plan of Lakeview Elementary School, one hundred Village Trail.
Thank you, Mayor White. Good evening, council. Just wanted to let you know about a couple of things that are coming forward on the next agenda. The replat of Trophy Wood Business Center is the area down here to the lower right, the southeast corner of the town. And this is these two lots right here to the west of Value Place Hotel. The owner is replating those into two lots, but he's got a buyer. You notice, right now, they're kind of equally divided, one and a half acres each. He's got a buyer interested in this eastern lot, just across the street from the Value Place Hotel, in order to build a dentist office building on that lot. So, he doesn't want an acre and a half, he wants an acre, one point two acres. And the property owner agreed to the expense of replating. And so, the replat you'll see is just that, to take the two lots from one and a half acres each to one that's gonna be one point two, and the remainder on the other lot. Pretty straightforward replat. The, the streets, the infrastructure are already in, put in by the owner back when this was first, the PD was first developed. One thing I do want to mention is Trophy Branch Drive that's in between the Value Place Hotel and this lot where the dentist office will go, and Plaza Drive that runs along the north side. Those are private streets. This is where you see the one point two acres, this'll be a larger lot. These are private streets, and so the dentist, if that plan goes through, he will own to the middle of the street. So, Value Place owns this side of the street, the gentleman who, whoever owns this will own that side of the street. So those are private streets, same thing along the top. Okay, P and Z did recommend approval, and so you'll see that on February fourth. Then, if, if I may, I'd like to switch to Lakeview Elementary and talk about that, and then, and then the church. On Lakeview Elementary, it's a site plan approval, and this is not a great, well, all right, we'll go with this. They're going to expand the existing school, adding twelve thousand five hundred square feet of new classrooms, in addition to the library of about four thousand square feet, and a new dining and kitchen, kitchen area addition of about fifteen thousand square feet. So for a total of about thirty-two thousand square feet that they're adding to the site. The front loop, right now it came, it, it was like this, and, and over the holiday break, they did extend this all the way out to where there will be a front loop there. They requested that they be allowed to do this work over the break, because as they're building, as they're constructing the school after they get approval from you, they will need the parents to use that rather than their existing way of coming in here, turning around and going back out. Because that'll all be under construction, they'll use this front loop to go in and out, until school starts in the fall. When school starts in the fall, then this front will be for buses only. The parents will come in here, and a new loop all the way up here, turn around and back out. So the parents will come out here, buses here. This also will provide stacking to where it should take the cars off of the street. Uh-oh, sorry, okay. And then, there is also fire protection and a water line that's being added all the way around the school, and fire protection, so that a fire truck can also come up here, go around to here, and turn around and back out. That was an existing garden up in here, and that's gonna become a play, a hard surface play area that doubles as a fire lane turnaround. Besides the new water loop, there's also gonna be a new storm sewer system for the water runoff from the roof and the new paved areas. The drainage will go north to an existing drainage channel. But in addition to that, because there is increased runoff, and they're adding quite a bit of impervious area, there will be a new detention pond up here in the northeast side of the site. And that detention pond will gather and collect all of the new runoff, so that there is not impact downstream. So they're not impacting downstream, which is required by town regulations. There are some design requirements, dumpsters, the dumpster facility is gonna be right in here, and that should meet town regulations as far as screening on three sides and a gate. They've got lighting requirements, landscaping, irrigation, parking. All of this is still under review. We have about a page and a half of outstanding comments. But, we're, we're pretty confident that by the time you see this on February fourth, those comments should be met. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with the stipulation that these outstanding comments must, must be met before it comes before council. And we're pretty confident that will happen. And then, moving on to the church. You're gonna see a preliminary plat, final plat and site plan for the church. The church has an existing, their existing building is about twelve thousand square feet, twelve thousand two hundred and eighteen square feet. They plan to remodel and expand the existing building, adding approximately sixteen thousand square feet, which will be classrooms, bathrooms, gymnasium, expanded sanctuary and parking. They, the, the use of the building won't change, it will still be a church, daycare and private school, as it is now. New zoning was approved last month from R twelve to NS. And that was required because a church is not allowed in residential zoning by right, it's not a permitted use. So they either had to apply for a conditional use permit or rezone to something that does allow a church. And NS zoning allows a church, and so they chose to rezone to that rather than ask for a CUP. That's important because they're asking for a lot of waivers, and on February fourth, you will hear them compare themselves to a lot of the other schools in town. And I would just remind you to keep in mind that schools are permitted in any zoning district. Quite a few of them are in residential zoning. And residential zoning has different requirements than NS. So, some of the variances that you'll be considering. The, the property that's residential here on the west and on the north. This is a lot owned by the subdivision, the lake subdivision. So it's residential on both of these sides. The town regulations require a masonry wall along those two property lines, and forty-foot landscape buffering. They are asking for a request to do neither of those at this time. And I'm not sure how we're going to, how we're gonna grant a temporary waiver. But they're stating that with this site plan, they're asking for approval of that waiver. But if they come back in the future with a, another site plan for an expanded campus, they will, they will expect to be held to that requirement for a masonry wall. Because eventually, their master plan is to build the entire site with a school that goes all the way up through twelfth grade. And when they do that, they would have parking all along this western.
Carolyn, is there a fence on the west side now?
Yes, sir, there is. All along here, there is a wood fence until you get to the last house, and they have a wrought iron fence.
And on the north side?
There is no fence along the north side, and there is a, a berm, there is a hill there between the two properties.
And there's a creek on the west side too, right?
No, ma'am.
Right up to their yards.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking like, cut it backwards, sorry.
So can I ask a question? Is it possible, I don't wanna get tied down in minutia here, but there are no homes on the north side. So that's a different problem than on the west side, whether there are homes.
That's right.
Wouldn't it be reasonable to ask that they build the masonry fence against the homes? And if they need a temporary variance for, for there are no homes, that would be somewhat different than backing up the homes.
Right, and-
I mean, I realize we can discuss all that the night of it, but that just-
There are, these seven-
Two different problems, there are two different needs.
Very much so, absolutely. And we did send letters to the seven homeowners. Six homes are occupied, one is not. Of the six that are occupied, and we also sent a letter to the HOA, of the six that are occupied, we heard from four. Three were in favor of the wall not being built at this time, one was in favor of the wall. And one gentleman did come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, one who was very vocally against the wall being built. But, the, the only thing that I would remind you of as, as staff, that it, there is a requirement for a masonry wall along there, and what they have is a six-foot wood fence, most of them have a six-foot wood fence versus an eight-foot masonry wall that must be maintained by the church, that's stated in the ordinance as well. It takes the, the burden off of the homeowners and puts it on the church. But their long-range plans will bring that development very close to those houses. And granting something now, I hope it is possible to make it temporary, because they could feel differently in the future. But that's, that's where they stand at the moment. They also, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted a waiver for both, the wall along both the west and north, recommended that they, they not have to put the wall in. They also recommended that they not have to put in landscaping along the, the forty-foot landscape buffer. And the church has no irrigation out that way, and so they do not want to have to landscape or irrigate that far from their building. Couple of things that are existing. This church was built prior to incorporation, and so they didn't have to abide by any town regulations. And so, when the town became incorporated, they became a legal non-conforming use. And their building height is restricted to one story or twenty-eight feet. Their existing building, church building, is taller than that. Their steeple is eighty-five feet, it's restricted to the same height requirement. So their existing building and steeple need a waiver to stay. The new construction, they are putting in a gym, a competition gym, that will be thirty-three feet. And so, they will need a waiver to be able to have a competition gym, because that's taller than the twenty-eight feet. They're restricted, restricted to twenty-eight feet because they have residential adjacent. There are, their existing parking has no landscape islands. There, there's a requirement, there must be landscape islands every twelve spaces. They do not have that, and they request that they not have to put that in. They are planning to use EFS, and EFS is not a, the town regulations state that buildings must be of a masonry product, brick, stone or stucco. And any other product must be, must be recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the council. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of EFS. So their recommendations to you are, the masonry walls along the west and north do not have to be put in. Landscape buffering does not need to be put in along those property lines. The height of the building and the steeple can stay, the height of the gym is allowed. Parking lot landscaping received a waiver, and EFS, that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. In addition to that, and, and this part, we're, we're still reviewing these plans, and there are a number of things still outstanding. One of the things I'm not sure yet what we'll be bringing to you on February fourth is the landscape plan. They had a landscape plan they submitted that met the town requirements, placing the correct number of trees along the street frontage, the correct amount around the site and the building. But during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, that plan was changed. And it has not been submitted to staff yet for us to review it, to know whether or not it meets the town regulations. The, one of the things that staff had noted to the Planning and Zoning Commission was, this gymnasium wall along the west side, there is no landscaping in front of it. And so, the residential will be looking at that large gymnasium wall with no, nothing to break it. During the P and Z meeting, the applicant went out in the lobby, redid the plan, presented it to P and Z, and they approved it. But I don't know what that is, so, so I'll give you an update on that on February fourth. And in addition to that, there were some staff comments that the plant list and landscape plan needed some minor alterations. Whether or not that happened, we'll have to see once we see the landscape plan, which I should have on Wednesday. There were a few other things. Fire lanes weren't identified on the site plan, the dumpster wasn't identified on the site plan, the wheel stops in the parking spaces, and they said that all of those things would be part of the plans. Again, as soon as we get a chance to review them, we'll hope, we'll have an update for you on February fourth. The Planning and Zoning Commission vote was six to one, Commissioner Landcore voted against. He felt there were too many loose ends that the commission was sending an incomplete project to the council. In addition to that, you'll be looking at two plats, the preliminary and final plat. The preliminary plat, approval of a preliminary plat requires that the applicant must submit drainage, and the drainage must meet the town's requirements. It's not required on the final plat, or I shouldn't say, it's not required with the final plat. We, we assume that the preliminary plat will be approved, and the final plat will shortly follow. What's approved with the preliminary plat for drainage goes with the final plat. They recently added a detention pond up in this corner, and they met with Tom Rutledge today. He's reviewing it, and I, I don't know what to tell you about that. There's, in order to be able to approve the preliminary and final plat, that, that detention pond has to meet town regulations. They, they do have water that is going to impact downstream. You know, you know the problems we have in this area, and with the quorum across the street, and, and so there are some questions we have about that. We'll bring all of that information to you on the fourth. Thank you very much.
We have two questions, we have two questions. Go ahead.
Mine is very simple. I just have to ask, when you indicated that, talking about the dentist, and you said these are two private roads, is that a problem for the future, or what does that mean when you, 'cause you hesitated there, and I'm just curious?
No, but Trophy Wood Drive is a public road. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that those streets within that PD, Plaza Drive that runs in front of Hampton, and then along Value Place Hotel, and some of these-
of these other, as these projects start to develop, I just wanted you to be aware that those are private roads, although they're not gated. Most private roads are gated. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware that those are private roads, and that the property owners are responsible for the maintenance. And that has not presented any problems. We had, we've had a stop sign knocked down by the Value Place Hotel a couple of times. We notified them, they immediately put it back up, hasn't been a problem.
Okay.
You mentioned that there is a six-foot wooden fence along that property line?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the requirement is for an eight-foot masonry.
The six-foot fences belong to the individual homeowners, right?
Yes, ma'am. And the church is required to put in eight-foot masonry. The homeowners, though, can, because, because they came in after the church, and the church was already there prior to incorporation, so didn't have to put in the masonry wall. And so then the homeowners came in, they wanted a fence, and their PD allowed them to have six-foot wood fencing. So they put it in according to their PD. Now that the church is remodeling and expanding, they have to abide by the town regulations, the wall is now a requirement for their property.
And you may not put two fences parallel to each other within so many feet?
That's correct, twenty feet.
And I thought that churches were allowed in any zoning.
No, ma'am. They either have to be in anything other than residential. In residential, it requires a CUP, a conditional use permit. They're allowed by right permitted use in the non-residential or in a PD.
I see, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Counsel, I do have a statement. We generally don't go through community development issues in a workshop. However, I've been telling you all along that our plate runneth over. And obviously, what we're working on are not just simple replats, and they're pretty extensive. Some of which, those two schools as an example, are on a timeline to try to get built in time for the next school year, both NIST Lakeview Elementary and the church. So we felt like it would be productive for us to at least give you where we're at with those four projects that Carolyn reviewed today, so that on the fourth, at our next council meeting, we can update you with where we're at with those outstanding issues and comments. And we're just trying to make this a little more efficient as we go along, because we are, and I've got a report on my manager's report later on tonight, where I'm going to articulate some of the other things that are on Carolyn's plate and in the community development arena, to kind of give you a better flavor of just what all we're working on in that world. So I hope this has been productive for you to kind of get you oriented, because at the next council meeting, we're blowing and growing.
The only thing, I have to say I'm discouraged with P&amp;Z approving something that is obviously, for one, not complete, and for two, in several instances, very much against some of the things they've done before, and some of the things that I was understanding were very important here. So we need to make sure that that one's, I'm not inclined to approve something that isn't complete. You know, and I understand they have timeframes, but that timeframe didn't just pop up out of nowhere. You know?
This did generate a lot of discussion at P&amp;Z. The church especially was a long, long discussion. And as I said, it wasn't a unanimous vote. It was, it was a six to one vote, and with a lot of discussion before we got to that point.
And it's not, it's not, it hasn't, since I've been here, they have conditionally approved several actions based on completion of whatever the case may be, whatever the comments might have been prior to the council meeting. So it's a conditional, it's not a blanket approval, it's a conditional approval. They recognize that there's more work to be done, but assuming that we can get those outstanding comments resolved in both of those instances, they were happy with.
I thought that ethos stuff, which I didn't even know what it is.
Ethos.
Ethos. I thought that was something everybody was dead set against.
You know anything?
That's why I'm.
Well, the problem with ethos has been the insulation and the backup system and the water getting behind the ethos and causing rot. It's not this structural system.
So done properly.
It's, there's been great improvements in the product. Ethos is basically a synthetic stucco, is the easiest way to describe it, so.
I'll ask a simple question. Is it, is there anything in our ordinance that prohibits ethos?
It doesn't allow it. It, what it states in the ordinance is brick, stone, or stucco. And any other product must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council.
Our ordinance say concrete stucco, or synthetic stucco?
It just says, it just says stucco. And as Councilman Struthers said, it's a synthetic stucco. So we want to make sure that you're okay with it.
You're sitting in a building with ethos. The Hampton Inn is all but ethos.
Ethos and stickstone.
Okay.
They, just, I mean, a couple of quick comments, because I know, so, I know they're on a time track to go move on. I mean, this is an eleven-acre site. It doesn't look like, I don't know what the square footage of the expansion is, but it's not a lot. So you're really not expanding the church's footprint, so you're, a lot. So you're, in my opinion, just a quick view, you're really not impacting any of the homeowners around her, because you still have a lot of distance.
Well, and I didn't give you all of the detail, because they are actually planning to also expand the sanctuary. But they're asking, they're going to be asking to do this in two phases. They can't meet the parking requirements. And so they want to be able to phase it to do the school expansion in order to hopefully generate the income to then do the church expansion. And with the church, they have to have a hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces. They're not going to be able to do that, they're going to come forward with a hundred and two, asking that they be able to do phase one, the school expansion, a hundred and two parking spaces. And then eventually, if they get the money, they'll expand the church and meet the other requirements.
They're adding a hundred and two, or they only have a hundred and two right now?
They have a hundred and two.
That was my other question, is that with the competition gym, if it's truly a competition gym, and they're going to have competition there in runs, and that should be some guidelines for a parking lot, you know, expansion, you know, or is it going to happen within church and not within church?
Yes, they, their existing parking handles their church services and their school, from their daycare and their kindergarten to third grade. I think they're going to, and so far, during the review of this, staff has found that there was only one time where we found they were parking on the grass, which is a code enforcement issue, and were completely full. And that was when there was a Christmas pageant of some sort, or something going on at Christmas at the school. So we have indicated to them that parking is important. They cannot afford it right now, and so they want to do that with phase two. And the problem with that is, is town ordinances are not supposed to be waived due to financial reasons only. And in some of these instances, that is really their only reason. And so it's a little bit of a struggle to help them out here. But they will, they will plead to you that they need to move on, because they want to get open in the fall, just like Lakeview Elementary. And in order to do that, they need to get council approval as soon as possible.
The only problem I see is this long litany of variances, especially considering where it's located. And I'm pretty sure we wouldn't do that for a commercial, somebody coming in and building. We'll look at it, I mean, I'll look at it, but I have a problem, I'll just tell you upfront, I have a problem with that many variances in one, in one project.
And we will try to bring you as much information as possible for you to make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm just going to take a five-minute break before we start a regular meeting. Convene into regular session. The invocation will be offered by Fire Chief Danny Thomas. The pledges will be led by Police Chief Scott Nippon. If you'll please rise.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings in our lives today. Lord, we ask you that you put your hand on this proceedings as we come together as a community and do business. Lord, also put your hand on those that are less fortunate and in need of your prayer in your hand. Lord, guide us, guide the ones that protect us and watch over this land. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one individual, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Constitution, by the majesty of the Constitution, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
They're doing pretty well on something. April, do we have anyone signed up for citizen presentations?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. The consent agenda.
Do you want to announce we're not doing number five? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, we're skipping item number five, as Shannon, our town secretary, is ill. So we will have to recognize her accomplishments at another time. The consent agenda, all matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on any of these items, and there's only one anyway. Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Rose, seconded by Councilman Schrader. All those in favor? Okay, great. Item number seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town of Trophy Club, Texas, amending the fiscal year 2013. Wait a second, I'm sorry. That was part of the.
Just says receive.
Thought that was odd. Okay, item number eight, receive a final report from the Charter Review Commission regarding proposed charter amendments for the May 2013 election. Chairman Stotz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Good evening to town staff. I'm not going to read through the entire report for you. I think all of you are quite capable of doing that, so there's no need for me to take all the time for that. I do want to go ahead and call attention to the folks who served on the commission with me. That would be Vice Chair Lourdes Hassler, she wouldn't be able to make, she wasn't able to make it this evening, Dave Dixon, Pearl Ford, Bert Miller, Larry Monday, Richard Mayberry, Joel Kele, and Jennifer Rauch. Did I say that correctly? Yes. And I, we had a great commission, I think, to work with. We had a very diverse and very professional group. We actually had two people coming from a law background who served, and we had people who are retired executive, executives, and it was a very good group to serve on the commission with. As it is pointed out in the write-up that you have there for the final report, we, from the outset, decided that there was not any major issues, there was not any major fundamental things seemingly wrong or missing out of the charter. That our, we didn't think it was our purpose or place at this time to go through and let's try and fix the town. So in other words, there's not anything major wrong. So we think there's a, we thought there's a number of cleanup items, and in fact, we dropped out a few cleanup items just to get the number of propositions down. But there's a number of things in there that need to be cleaned up, we believe, in the future. And so we're thinking that maybe we're leaving a little bit of something for someone, right, in the future to work on. We kind of amused ourselves with that thought. But anyhow, it was, I thought, I thought we had very productive meetings. We had many meetings, of course. We had, we started back in May, was our, I believe it was our first meeting, is that correct? June 25th was our first meeting. And then we concluded on January 14th, and we, they've, of course, all been open to the public. We've even had a public hearing. And so we've received not a whole lot of input from the public. We, of course, received input from the council, and we appreciate that very much. In fact, we took that into consideration to modify one of these per our discussion that we had at the last council meeting. I believe that would draw your attention to number two. I believe that's the correct one, looking at this correctly, yeah. Amend section 302B to clarify that council will be the judge to determine that candidates meet the requirements to run for office and to amend section 304B to clarify that if the mayor or a member of the council is convicted of a felony or crime of moral perpetuity, his office is automatically vacated without the need for any council action. So there have been some concerns about how we do that, there's a little bit of conflict between those two sections, and so we cleaned that up as well. Like I said, I was very grateful for the commission's support, and glad to have the opportunity to be the chair of that. The one thing that we did discuss at a number of meetings was the, they're kind of two related issues, I believe they're related, kind of loosely. One of them has to do with having wards or districts, and having council members represent a particular geographical area of the town, and then also adding another council member. We went to the point of voting on that within the commission. It failed on a tie. We rediscussed it again at our, at our last meeting back on the 14th. We decided not to pursue having that as a proposition to add another council member at this time. And I would like to just give a recommendation to you on behalf of the commission, from what we discussed our last meeting. And we even, we even thought about perhaps putting in, maybe we should put in a proposition to kind of formulate a target or bogey for the council to kind of have, and for everyone to have to shoot for when we would start considering having wards or adding another council member. We decided instead that we would just give you a recommendation from the commission. So our recommendation is this, is that sometime within the next year or two, whether the council decides to tie that to some number that we reach as far as residency within the town, or you look at the number of housing, the number of home permits that are left to hand out, so you realize you're about to achieve full belt build-out of the town, whatever that target is, that when you hit that point, like I said, and leave it to your discretion to decide when, but when you hit that point, that then the council, you know, appoints a commission or committee to look at starting the process of an investigation, basically if you want to call it investigative commission, to look into having wards or districts within the town. There has been some concern at times about there not perhaps being equal representation if you wound up with a bunch of council members out of one area or another, or whatnot. This would basically, depending upon how you do that, would help guarantee a more representative presence on the council. I think that is also the proper time to look at and plan out adding another council member, if we're going to go that route. And I know that you cannot call another charter commission for at least two years from today, is my understanding, or two years from the time that. Mm-hmm. So, so for at least two years, you cannot call another charter commission together. But you could have another commission that could start looking at just that, and then, of course, the council can take it upon themselves to vote on and put together a proposition to put before the voters, that then at a time in the future, like I said, I'm expecting that this process is not a real speedy or supernatural process. You know, it's going to be something that's probably going to take some time, there's going to be some investigation. I know that the, that the Department of Justice comes in, wants to ask questions, and you have to go through a lot of procedures for that, if you're going to go to a district or ward representation. We just did not think that this, right now, was the right time to do that with charter commission, and to start that process. I don't, we're not at full build-out, but I do think, and it wasn't just, I believe it, but also the other charter commission members believe that, that's something that needs to be looked at, it needs to be planned, and need to set some kind of target, say, okay, this is when we're going to start that process, realizing it's going to take a year or two to get done, more than likely, and also decide if at that time, is it appropriate to also add a council member. I know some people, like I said, feel very strongly about adding another council member. I know some people, like I said, feel very strongly about adding another council member right now. We didn't feel that did. I think the right thing to do is to plan it out and to add one and do all this in a planned, organized, well-thought-out fashion. I know that if that is something that y'all decide to add to the propositions, to, to consider adding one now, I know that then the town is going to incur, I believe, extra expense to call for a special election to be able to then do that because you can't, you know, run in another council member at this time. It has to be approved first. Then because of our, then because of the charter, the charter says, when you have a vacant seat, then you have to fill it. So then we'd have to have a special election just to fill the seat. So, anyway, I just think that it would be better if we planned that out, that addition. But, once again, that's your call. We're just making a recommendation to you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, and I'd like to, before we even talk about this, say thank you very much. I understand this is a lot of time and a lot of commitment. And I really appreciate all the work that all of you have done for the town. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I would also like to echo the mayor. I believe, at least the reports, I, I never visited. It was my feeling from the outset that the council had no business at your meetings. But I do understand that you went through every single item in the charter. And I think you should be commended for taking that amount of time.
I want to thank the group for taking the civics lesson. It's, it can be long and tedious. I'd like to clarify a couple of points on charter process, as I recall them. What occurs is, it's not the election on an amendment or a proposition that it went to an election. But what happens if one of the propositions passes, then the charter is frozen for two years. So it's not just going to election, it needs to be passed. The other one I'd like to touch bases on and ask the attorney on this one was my understanding that you could add a council member at an election at the same time that it was called.
And you and I have talked about this. We had this discussion, I believe, the last go-round. And there's a section in the local government code that basically provides that nothing prevents a person from being elected. I was researching that. I can't find case law interpreting that in talking to the Secretary of State Elections Division. They weren't real clear on whether that would work simply because the office doesn't truly exist until you canvass the election. So there is no current case law on it. I think the last time we talked about there being logistical problems was someone perhaps not wanting to put out their time and effort to run if they weren't sure there was going to be an office. But there are also apparently some unanswered legal questions with regard to whether or not the office is actually there to fill until it's canvassed.
Okay.
So, going up and I'll certainly add my thanks to the commission, J.D., and your team did an excellent job, those that are present and those that aren't. I know it was a lot of hours. So thanks for your time. So on a staging now, and again, so we wouldn't end to a lot of expense, if we tag teamed this in the future to a, adding a ward or district or council persons in a, in a November election and then rolled, then it would be in place. Or do we have to amend the charter? Because J.D. was talking something about that, well, okay, now we have a new place. Now we have to have a special election. It'd be good if we could avoid that process. So we, I'm thinking if we could add, you know, should there be a need? And I, my personal opinion right now, there's not a need. But, you know, maybe at some point, if it build out at 12, 13,000 people, then maybe it makes sense to go do that and either create a spot based on a time run. But if we can do it without a lot of additional expense. I mean, to me, it's kind of silly to have a special election just to add one, one person. It'd be, if we could move it in a cycle, it'd be obviously less cost to the citizens to go do that.
So is the, is the question...
The question is, can't we, if in sometime in the future, be able to add the charter amendment in, to a November election? And then be able to roll that in and have then the seat would become available and would run in our normal May election?
Okay, and I may be confused. So let me give you a long answer and hopefully I'll answer everything in there. Under state law, it is an exact two-year date for a charter amendment election. So if, if we have a charter amendment election, and I'm assuming that one of these is going to pass at least, then it's going to be two years. If the election date is May the 8th of 2010 and it's May the 7th of 2012, that is not two years. It has to be an absolute two-year anniversary date. So the next time we could amend our charter would be two years from this current election date. It would have to at least be the same date. And I, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the date is for May. But it would have to be at least that date or later. So that would be the next time we could amend the charter. Could we put something in the charter that said we're going to have a new position to start? Be elected at a certain election in the future? Certain, we could have some kind of trigger in there if we wanted to put that out to a future election date.
So what you're telling me, I mean, and again, I didn't want to take, take a lot of time on this. What I was saying, and let's just use general terms and say, we have, this charter member's going to come up in May of 13. And let's say it's 10, just, just for simplicity. So then, something passes, so then that's May 10th of 15. And what I would be talking about would be November of 15 to have the charter amendment and that would come effective, since it's in an election process and we've already going to have the costs associated with that with the new seat being coming available or held for election in the May of 16.
Yes.
Election.
Yes, I think you could put some triggering timelines in your charter amendment, yes.
So we wouldn't have to go through a special election. That's, that's, I'm looking, because elections are expensive. I mean, it costs us $20,000 at least to do a special election. And probably, if that's all we were doing, probably wouldn't get a real big turnout either, so.
I think we also have some logistical issues. Yes.
I think we also have some rulings about how long we can leave an office open, which might...
Well, that's the other component of it. But if you had a set triggering date, you couldn't just put it in that we were going to have one and then not have one because we have three-year terms. If there's a vacancy, you have 120 days to call an election. And you, that's the only time under which you can call an election outside of a uniform election date is if you have the three-year terms and you have a vacancy. So if someone resigned tomorrow and it wasn't 120 days before, we could go ahead and call it. It would be, we'd have to call it. It would be an off-election date, off-standard election date.
I also have a legal question. I realize that at-large positions simplify things. How involved, if we ever were to decide to go to districts or wards, how involved do we have to get the state and the federal government in drawing our districts?
There are law firms and consultants that specialize in drawing of district lines. And you're looking at probably, my understanding, what I've seen in other cities, you're looking at an 18-month process to go through because you're going to have an analysis. You're going to have Department of Justice involvement because they want to get on and make sure that voting rights are not diluted. You'll have public hearings. It is a fairly long, technical process to go through.
Can I assume that 18 months of lawyers is expensive?
And consultants, yes, would be expensive, yes.
That, that was what I was going to say, is that it is a cost factor when you start considering districts. As the liaison for the council, I want to say to Chairman Stotz and all those who are present today, it was a privilege to be with you, all those meetings. I loved it. They started on time and they ended on time. It was wonderful, with a lot of detail. So you did a superb job. Thank you very much.
I want to touch one other thing. And that is the having add a council member in districts or mixed, a mixed district system at the same election. The problem you run into, and I'll speak from somebody that's worked in charters, the problem that you run into is that you have, you have to separate those two issues on the ballot. You can't put them together because they're two separate things. And when you separate them, you wind up addressing the same section. When you work with districts and the number of council members, you're going to have a council member assigned to a district. And so when you do that, you wind up working the same issue in the same section. And that creates a real issue. So I mean, just looking, looking forward for those that would be inclined to do that. I would, I would think you'd probably want to look just at one or the other.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
While we're handling, handing out accolades, I, I too enjoyed working with the Charter Review Commission. But I want to offer special kudos to our town attorney, Patricia, as well as our town secretary, Shannon, who provided the administrative support to this review commission and the legal support to this commission. I don't think that they could have done what they did without their support. And I certainly want to thank both of those ladies for their efforts.
Definitely, thank you.
I do have one other question, Mayor. And I, I downloaded, I downloaded this off the internet, off the link that was in the packet. And it has to do with the town secretary and the powers and duties section. I think we're looking at proposition number eight on page, it's on page seven of the, of your packet. And I trust that I have the correct one. Did you do research in other charters to check the verbiage and the alignment of responsibilities here? Did you, did you find some? Because the reason I ask is, I went out and looked between 405, Powers of the Town Manager, and 408, Duties of the Town Secretary. And I could not find any that had that alignment. I looked in the local areas. I also did some Round Rock and some Waco and some other, other areas like that. What I found was that it would talk about the town secretary and say, just like you have here, would be the custodian of municipal records of the town. And then you would not find in the powers and duties of the town manager section what you have, have there. The other thing I found, and, and the closest one I found to using that particular verbiage was our neighbor South Lake, in which case they use, they, under the town secretary, they say that the town secretary will recommend to the council rules and regulations to be adopted by ordinances, et cetera. And so I was wondering if there was some baseline that you used to come up with that verbiage, that split? I'm on, it's number eight.
Do you not agree with it?
No.
The custodian records?
It's, 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 yes, it's talking about the town records.
Yes, Councilman Rose.
Maybe, maybe mine is. Maybe I don't have the right one I'm working back, working with.
Okay, proposition number eight. Amend section 405 and section 408 so that the town secretary, rather than town manager, is designated as custodian of almost, of all municipal records. So, to be very honest with you, what we were trying to do here was try and make a match up with reality, which is, the reality is, the town secretary is really the custodian of all municipal records. In other words, she's the one who, I say she, it could be a he in the future, but you understand where I'm going here.
Yes.
Shannon, at this point, is truly the custodian of those records.
Yes.
And so, we thought, let's change it to where it says the truth, which is, she's the custodian. Now, the reality is also, is that she, you know, or the town secretary cannot just go and ad hoc, go and change municipal records and just do things as they see fit or change, for example, document retention standards and things like that on their own. That's not within their purview to do that. So that lies with the town manager or, you know, anything that the town secretary is going to want to enact or change or ask for there to be an adjustment is going to go through the town manager to the council. That's just the way it's going to go. The town secretary, I do not believe, brings items for your consideration and goes onto your agenda directly themselves. Do they? As far as I know, the town manager and the mayor sets that all out. So we did that to kind of reflect reality. That was our hope and intent there. Now, I understand what you're saying is, hey, if you're going to move it, you know, move the whole, you know, move the whole enchilada over. You could, but then it doesn't really reflect the reality. We thought that, hey, it's going to wind up with the town manager anyway, being the one to bring it to you. So you might as well leave it the way that we did it. That's why we amended it. So if you wish to adjust it, I understand. But that's what, that was our reasoning on that. Does that answer your question?
Okay, are you okay?
Well, I would like to adjust it.
Well, what, why?
Because the reason for it is, is an alignment of responsibility. First of all, the town secretary works for the town council.
Right.
Okay. The town secretary is a custodian. And being the custodian, you are responsible for municipal records. She's trained to do that job.
Correct.
And it seems to me that the person who is trained to do that job should be the person that is making the recommendation to council on the rules and regulations for ordinances that are protected, you know, for those, for those, for those records. Now, having said that, there's nothing that precludes the town secretary working with the town manager as they do on a day-to-day basis to bring something like that to the town council. Or even the town, you know, even if the town manager was to present it. But in my perspective, that is something that belongs particularly under the town secretary. And as I said, in, in the research that I did, I could only find South Lakes that had all of this verbiage. And it was all in one spot.
I, I think when you go out and you look at other towns, though, it, it depends on how each town is constructed and the way that they run their business. I don't think South Lakes charter, even though it's, it's their charter. Y'all used to tell me, we ain't South Lake. And, and we still ain't.
The, the other thing I could say is, even, there may not even be a requirement to have it under the town manager's responsibilities because a lot that I found strictly said that duties of the town secretary was to be the custodian and never got into recommending, recommending anywhere in the charter that way, so.
I don't think the town secretary needs to be recommending anything. I, we hired the town manager to run the town and...
The secretary actually reports to us.
I understand that. So that would be you, the mayor, and the town manager set the agenda and would make the recommendations. I would assume either you, either you or Town Manager Sly would bring any recommendations to the council and not the town secretary.
Since this was one of the items that I was responsible for researching and moving, let me share with you my research.
Okay.
I did not go through all the charters of all the towns and cities and counties and whatever. But I did go through the record management laws because our town secretary is responsible for all the recommendation management. I think she, excuse me, my, what's her title, RCM? Record Management Coordinator, whatever. She's got three initials.
Records Retention.
What's her acronym?
Yeah, I can't remember what acronym it is. But there's a specific acronym.
RMO, RMO.
Records Management Officer.
Record Management Officer. So she is the Record Management Officer. I looked at that code. And that code said that the Record Management Officer should be custo, the custodian of all the town's records. Therefore, since she was our town secretary and the Record Management Officer, she was the person that legally, in my looking at it, should be the custodian of records. The reason we suggested divide it is that they're going to be, in record management, it's the legislature set up laws and rules and regulations for record management. They may at times require the town to have an ordinance. It was my suggestion that if it creates an ordinance, then that's under the responsibility of the town manager. And that's why it was divided that way.
Based on the ordinance.
Thank you. I continue to be more and more impressed by how much effort you put into this. I continue to be more and more impressed by how much effort you put into this.
Yeah, thank you, Pearl. Ms. Pearl?
I have a question. Okay, the amendments in the final report, is this anything like the way we'll actually see it on the ballot?
No, what you'll see on the ballot is what you saw last time. The ordinance will have the proposition language. It will have the red line, red line proposed changes. The actual ballot will just have the proposition language. And what we've talked about doing is just putting the ballot proposition out on the website with a link where you can go look at the amendments, or we'll put the ordinance out so that the people, residents, can pull it up and look at it and see what the proposition is and what the actual change would be affected by that proposition.
So they would, you're saying they would be looking, they could look at something like this and link to the actual proposition? Did I get that right?
They would look at the proposition and link to the actual language, is what I think we've been talking about. I don't know what, I don't know if that decision's been made yet.
This final report has a link that takes you to the page on our website that addresses the educational component of this upcoming election, should you call it the election.
All right. It's just that it kind of makes sense when you read it here. It makes it easy to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish with each change. And sometimes the way those things read, it's a lot more difficult to make any sense out of it.
And this will be published. I mean, we tried to keep this brief because we do have to publish it and didn't want the taxpayers to incur the expense. We will eventually have to publish the amendments anyway in the newspaper of it. Rather than doing that twice, this is the abbreviated version. And the longer version will be published in accordance with state law.
Okay.
There's no action to be had. You just received the report tonight? You know, if there's a direction from the council moving forward, you can let me know. And you've got about 30 days before you will meet at the end of February to call the May election, as well as any special elections, or what's appropriate?
Well, this is a special election.
This is a special election.
Yes.
And perhaps the CCPD would be another special election?
Yes, if the EDC and CCPD actions move forward, then that would be...
So you have approximately 30 days to absorb and review this? And if there's something further that you'd like to get calendared and discussed, we'll meet on February 4th and February 25th.
Uh huh. JD?
Sorry, JD?
Thank you. I just had a question pass along. It's a good question. And maybe I missed this somewhere along the way. Maybe a technical question for Patricia. Is there a copy of that report that we're supposed to officially sign on? Or do y'all just do an electronic signature and call it done? Or, I see there's all of us listed in there and have little signature lines, and I didn't know how much of that...
We'll be working to get signatures.
With all of our illnesses last week, we had a little technical difficulty. So we will need the signatures of everyone involved on the final report.
Yes.
So you'll be contacting us?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Good work.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Item Nine. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the reduction of speed limits on residential streets throughout the town.
We do have one speaker. Should we have the chief introduce it first, or?
However you would like to do that, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to hear what the chief has to say, and then we'll call the speaker. Just so that everybody's speaking from the same point of reference.
All right, Mayor and Council, first of all, I owe y'all an apology. I submitted the document that you see there that's highlighted in green and yellow. It's named almost the same thing as my memo was, and I submitted a wrong document to Shannon. She just puts in there what she gets. So y'all didn't get my attached reports that's referenced in the agenda. But I will go through that. We did look very seriously at this. There were four of us involved in this. Patricia, Carolyn, Ed Helton, and myself, looking at the various options that the council has regarding lowering the speed limit in our residential areas as requested by one of our residents. There are essentially two ways that a council or any governing body can reduce the speed limit from the prima facie a speed limit that is listed in the transportation code of 30 miles an hour. The first is done with an engineering study, a traffic study, of the speed limits in the area that is under question. If the determination is made by the speed limit study and the engineering report that the 85th percentile speed needs to be lower than the 30 mile an hour speed limit, the council can, by ordinance, lower it to that 85th percentile speed. Now, I'm going to, time's not here right now. My journeyman understanding of engineering reports is the 85th percentile is the assumption that 85% of the people are going to be driving a reasonable and safe speed through a certain area. And that's the reason they set speed limits where they do. If the 85th percentile speed in a certain area is 10 miles an hour, then that's considered reasonable and safe, and the council can lower the speed limit to that level. The second way you can reduce the speed limit, you can't reduce it below 25 miles an hour. And that requires the governing body determine that the prima facie of speed limit on that roadway is unreasonable or unsafe. Of course, in either situation, you require direct signs, and the speed limit is not official and not enforceable until those signs are erected. Now, the transportation code doesn't give us a significant amount of guidance in regard to how you go about determining that the speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe. Excuse me. But I don't believe you can do it arbitrarily and hope to prosecute those cases in court. It does give us a little bit of guidance or a suggestion that one way that we can determine that a speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe is to compare the number of traffic citations, warnings, and accidents on a given roadway that are actually, one of the factors is the speed of the vehicle. And so, going through those numbers in the past, they can give you some kind of determination. They, as I said, they don't say you have to do this to make the determination. But if you do make the determination it's unreasonable or unsafe, then every year from then on, as long as it's 25 miles an hour, you're required to put a report online and send a text dot that gives the number of citations, warnings, and accidents relating to, factors related to speed in that given area. I did contact several chiefs. These chiefs ranged from people who were fighting the 25 mile an hour speed reduction with all of their efforts that they could get a mass. Some had inherited 25 mile an hour speed limits, and some had willingly participated in getting the 25 mile an hour speed limits passed in their area. I did get some copies from some of the ordinances. Patricia reviewed some ordinance through the UNICODE. She can give any comments that she would like to in regard to those ordinances if you decide to go that direction. Now, basically, you have before you to hand out the report from the engineering study, a engineering firm, as to what the cost would be for the engineering study if you wanted to reduce those speed limits through the engineering study, rather than a determination by the review of the citations and so forth. Ed provided a list of speed limit signs that we currently have in place. Since the prima facie of speed limit on residential streets is 30 miles an hour, it's a very limited number of speed limit signs in town at this time. Most residential streets do not have them. As an example, he gave us a cost of $120 per sign, including the signs, hangers, posts, and labors to install them. If we lower the speed limit on 30 streets, for example, we need at least two on each street, one going in and one going out, which requires 60 signs, and $120 apiece is $7,200. We've got over 220 streets. And about seven of them, we wouldn't need the signs to be changed on because they already have the signs. They're the major streets. Argyle had an interesting concept. They, if a certain area requested a lower speed limit, then the residents in that area would petition the council to reduce the speed limit and would give their reasons for the reduction. That, I'm assuming, would assist the council in making a determination that the speed limit was unreasonable or unsafe. I don't think that it would, those reasons by themselves, though, would be sufficient to make that determination. So really, you have several options. You can leave the speed limits where they are. You can have the speed limits survey done, the engineering study that goes along with it. Or we can go back and hand count all the warnings and so forth. We can't do that by the computer. Our RMS system lists the location that the traffic stop was made, not the location that the citation, that the violation occurred in. Now, the court software does do that, and I have done a review of that. Of course, no one's surprised Trophy Club Drive is the roadway that we have the most attention paid to as far as speed goes, with easily two-thirds to three-quarters of the citations occurring on Trophy Club Drive. You can, as I said, go with the traffic study. You can go with the determination that the speed limit needs to be lowered to 25 and no lower. Keep in mind, if you do the traffic study, that's kind of a two-edged sword. If the study comes back that the prima facie, I mean, excuse me, that the prima facie of speed limit is reasonable and safe based on the 85th percentile, it's unlikely that an engineer would give his approval to change that to a lower speed. And also, if an engineering study showed that, it would be difficult to prosecute a lower speed limit.
Okay. Yes, I do. Mr. Hoover?
Larry Hoover, 1118 Berkshire Court. I was amazed to see this show up, where one person complains, and the town's going to propose that we spend $12,375 for a study because of one complaint. I've lived in here 30 years. My kids were two years old and four years old when we moved here, and we lived on Inverness, which is a cut-through street. It's not a cul-de-sac. Family across the street had two children the same age as mine. We never let our kids play in the street. They played in the backyard. But if you drive down Morgan and Broadway, the street's full of kids. That's not a speed issue. That's a parent control issue. It has nothing to do with how fast you're going to drive. I think that before you start trying to lower the speed limit all over town where there's not a problem, that you need to tell the parents, "Kids should play in the backyard, not the street." And if you're going to insist on lowering the speed limit on that street because the parents will not do that, then lower it only on those two streets. Don't lower it throughout the whole town. The other issue I have is, with this 85 percentile you keep talking about, is that the state of Texas has used that as justification to increase the speed limits, not lower them. And I don't drive 30 miles an hour on side streets. But you're going to put up a test. If I'm driving 20, I would always have to drive 20. And I think that's patently ridiculous. Thank you.
Can I clarify?
Well, and I had hoped that people would listen to the chief and understand, but, go ahead.
I just want to clarify one thing, or two things. One is, it wasn't just one complaint. It was one person presenting, but it was a petition signed by, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, 150?
118.
118, okay, it was over 100. So it's not just one person. The second thing that I want to clarify for everybody is, the intention of the petition was never to explore the whole town. The intention was to explore two or three of the streets in the new Highland subdivisions. I'll just leave it at that for now. We can continue there.
And I just have to add that this is not the first time that we've had people come to us about the speed limit. However, I would also point out that spending $12,000 was one of many. There are those who chose to pick up only that. It was one of many options that we were given. It's just a frustration of mine that people pick out one thing. I personally don't see spending $12,000. I think, as you pointed out, Chief, I think there's a risk with that. And I also think that it isn't an issue we have all over town.
It's not.
I will entertain discussion on what you think might be, Mr. Mayor? By me? Oh, I only, did we have someone else sign? Oh, did you want it? Well, you guys sign up while I have here from Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. As you might, as you might expect, I have an opinion on this. I spent a great deal of time, we didn't get this until the packet came out. We didn't know about it. I spent most of my day today doing, at the possibility of being accused of being the new Bill Rhodes, a lot of research on this particular issue. I spoke both with the state of Texas and I spoke with the city of Frisco, who, when this ordinance, when this law was passed back in 2005, I know more about this law than I care to. Frisco explored the possibility of lowering the speed limit to 25 from 30 and abandoned it once they got in with the state. I have some disagreements with the chief on what can be done, at least according to my research. So, as I usually do, when I find something important, I write it down. Because I have to get all my thoughts together. Tonight, we're being asked to consider an initial expenditure of $12,375 of the taxpayer's money to pay for a study to determine whether the town can present enough evidence to the state of Texas to justify lowering the residential speed limit within the town limits from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. A few residents have voiced concerns that people sometimes speed on their street, and because of that, we need to lower the speed limit. The state of Texas has established a prima facie residential speed limit of 30 miles per hour throughout the entire state. The speed was established because it was determined to be a safe and prudent speed on residential streets. They do allow a city or a town to lower the speed limit to 25. And the following is a summary of the criteria required for a city to approve lowering the prima facie residential speed limit to 25. I got this from the city of Frisco, who attempted this. And when they did it, this is what came back to them. "The governing body must first determine that the prima facie of speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe by," and I quote, "performing an engineering and traffic investigation and determining that the prima facie of speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe for that road." "Two, the street must be less than 35 feet in width." "Three, vehicular parking is not prohibited on one or both sides of the road. We currently have no overnight parking in our town." "Five, the speed limit must be declared by the governing body, and the new speed limit is effective when the governing body erects signs giving notice of the new limits." "I submit that it would be virtually impossible to build a case that a 30 mile per hour speed limit is either unreasonable or unsafe in Trophy Club. We have not had a large increase in the number of traffic accidents in the past year or two. And to my knowledge, we haven't had a number of residents run over by cars. I believe that we are being asked to consider a knee-jerk reaction to a few citizens' complaints or concerns. I have heard it suggested that by lowering the speed limit to 25, maybe those that speed will now just go 30. This seems to be a situation similar to putting up stop signs at Trophy Club Drive and Durango. A few citizens stated that a three-way stop was needed to be added at that intersection because they had difficulty getting onto Trophy Club Drive in the mornings, and that was the only way to solve the problem. Of course, we had just completed the construction of the roundabout to speed up traffic on Trophy Club Drive and eliminate the traffic-choking three-way stop. Now, we were being asked to add another just a quarter mile down the road. The other reason given was that we needed to slow the traffic because there's a crosswalk at that intersection used by schoolchildren. In reality, there appeared to be a concern only two times... there appeared to be a concern only two times a day. In the mornings, when people were leaving for work and when the kids were going to school, and the other was in the afternoons when the kids were going home from school. The obvious question was why the tra, why stop the traffic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to solve a twice-a-day, five-day-a-week occurrence? A no-cost traffic count was conducted, and it was obvious from that count that stop signs on Trophy Club Drive were not warranted. We also discovered that the speeding in the mornings and the afternoons could be reduced by simply creating a school zone on either side of the intersection. That solved the problem. If each of us sitting here tonight were asked if we believe we are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, I believe that each of us would say, yes, we are. I am a native Texan, I'm proud of that, by the way, and as long as I can remember, I've heard the expression, "All hat and no cattle." For those of you that may be new to this area, that simply means big talk and no action. I never want that, that expression associated with me. Let's assume for a moment that we spend twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and through some miracle, we satisfy the requirements to lower the speed limit to twenty-five. We would then have to install twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limits throughout the town because in Texas, the prima facie residential speed limit is thirty unless you erect signs that say otherwise. I did a quick count, I got that map, and I counted all the intersections off of Trophy Lake, Indian Creek, Trophy Club Drive, Durango, Billings Trail, Bobcat, and Trophy Wood. It's over two hundred intersections there. I think it's reasonable to assume that we're gonna have to put up a minimum of two hundred signs if we lower the speed limit throughout the town. And I believe a conservative estimate is gonna be about two hundred dollars a sign by the time you buy the sign, the post, the concrete, and the labor, and that's another forty thousand dollars, for a total of fifty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. After we spend the fifty-three three seventy-five, does anyone here actually believe that those that are the habitual offenders will actually slow down? I suggest that they will still speed, and I am confident that police and insurance data will support me on this. If we were simply to pass a law to stop people from offending, I would have voted yes on every issue. Think of the savings of not having any crime, all we have to do is pass a law. That's just not the case, and that's why we have a police department, to catch the offenders. Rather than spending taxpayer money on studies and signs, let's review our schedule of fines, make it more costly for those that do offend. Maybe we should establish a speed awareness month, we've never talked about speed since I've lived here to anybody. Something like the Click It or Ticket program that the state does. Designate February as Dial Your Speed Back Month in Trophy Club. Have zero tolerance for speed, and have every officer available writing tickets. Throwing money at a problem or writing a new law is easy, but ineffective. Unfortunately, this has become the cure at every level of government from local to national. The reality is, we do not have a problem. What we have are the voiced concerns of a few citizens. Unfortunately, the reality is that we cannot enact new laws or ordinances for every concern, and we can never enact enough laws to make everyone safe all the time. We simply need to aggressively enforce the laws we already have. But when we do, and our officers adopt a zero tolerance for speed, for speeders, we need to be prepared for that pushback. Our duty is to be responsible, and I believe that we can address these concerns responsibly without spending the tax dollars of the ninety-five percent that do obey the law. I will vote no on this issue because to do otherwise would betray my promise of physical responsibility, and I urge the other members of the council to do the same. Thank you.
I just, I'm sorry, I just have to say one thing. As I said before, that was only one of many, six different options.
I didn't say one, ma'am.
Okay, so it isn't a yes-no issue at this point? That was only one recommendation, or possible option, not even a recommendation? Mrs. Sly, we have two more speakers.
Yes, I understand, I'll be brief. First, nowhere in your packet or, or in my emails to you on different subjects, have you ever received a recommendation from staff to spend twelve thousand X men, X dollars? I felt like I needed to provide you a cost, because that is an option, if that's the direction you wanted to give to us. And, and if you wanted to study a subdivision, I could provide you the cost of a subdivision. The fact of the matter is, to, to determine that prima facie speed, and to justify that eighty-five percentile number, it was going to cost public money. For the entire town, twelve grand. And in no way, shape, or form was I, was I or any of the staff recommending that we do that. Okay, but you needed to understand that that was an option available to you, as it relates to this issue.
And can I just make one point about that? We, we had, and, and I think this is really important to understand. We had a resident come to us with a petition. We weren't able to discuss it at that point, and we asked our staff to look into the issue, and that's what they did, presenting us the results. No more, no less at this point, I think Mike had more.
I had one more other point to make. Councilman Mayor is spot-on. This issue, and, and I don't care if it's in the Highlands subdivision, or Eagles Ridge, or you pick a subdivision, it doesn't matter, it's an enforcement issue. It could be forty miles an hour, it can be twenty-five miles, you know. A study not only could, could come back at twenty-five, but you're taking the, the risk that it comes back at thirty-five as a safe and prudent speed. And you, as a council, have to have that information to make that kind of decision, to be enforceable in a municipal court. I, I really believe that this is an enforcement issue, and I've asked Chief Niffen to step up, especially in the Highlands area that where, where we were petitioned by that neighborhood, to increase their presence out there. It's amazing what two and three, or maybe four speeding ticket violations will do. And, you know, they are, they are very social media savvy. They've got all their neighborhood Facebooks, Facebook accounts. It's, it would be, it, it's amazing what would happen if we do cite two or three instances. Hey, guys, the speed limit's thirty, not thirty-five. And, and that, you know, I've asked the chief to, to increase his presence out there, we'll continue to do that. Personally, I think that is the action of choice. If you were to ask me for a recommended course of action, I would tell you, increase the presence, write a few citations, legitimate citations, don't create them. Write a couple of those citations and slow the speeders down. I happen to live on the corner of Broadway, and I witness the speed. I see it. I wish I had the authority to write the citations myself, because I do see it. So I know and, and, and believe wholeheartedly that there is an issue out there, and you're exactly right. There's a lot of kids playing in the streets and in the front yards. I, I, I think all it's gonna take is a few citations, and the word will get out, and, and speed will be diminished.
I think that your, your thought of having a promotion, you know, and talking about it, building awareness of it is also a very good idea. Excuse me, Bill had a comment, and I do have the other speakers, but go ahead.
I think that, I think that, are we looking at Broadway and Morgan? Is that primarily the areas that we're talking about in the neighborhood? Okay. I think if we still have the capability, we may be able to do our own speed study, I'll step out there on that one. Last time, a few years ago, we had a radar detect, detection sign system that would give you your speed, do we still have that?
We do.
Okay, that, if I remember right, that system records speeds, and you get a, you get a printout of it. Because we did one on my street on Inverness.
It gives you the speed that you're going, and it tracks the number of vehicles and the speeds that they're going in one direction only.
Okay, but it's one direction, but, and it also, if I remember right, logs the time.
That's true.
Okay, so we could take that particular piece of equipment out here and kind of get a study of our own on what the speed, speed's going on without spending twelve thousand dollars.
That's true. We would probably have to cite it on the sidewalk. It is gonna be tricky getting it set up.
But it would be, it would be something that we could do.
Sure.
And those neighborhoods who have an issue might be willing to work with us at getting it set up.
Absolutely.
And then we can kind of get a look on what the speed's doing without spending.
We can certainly do that.
Spending the twelve thousand dollars. I, I can, short war story. Shortly after I purchased Mr. Hoover's house on Inverness, I say shortly, it may have been a couple of years, had a little problem with speeding on the street, and I came before council and talked about speeding. I was looking for speed humps. I co, I coordinated with an off-duty officer, and Inverness is not really a wide street. It's wide enough for three vehicles, and so I imagine it's comparable to your street. I mean, if you park a car on each side, you've got room for one to go through between. Inverness is a long street, Mr. Hoover called it a cut-through street, that was the way it was being used. So we set up a car on each side of the street so you would have one vehicle room to go through between it. And then we went on up the street, oh, seventy-five yards, and parked alongside the street, and the officer in plain clothes, not a police vehicle, got out, and I had a timeframe picked out, and my vehicle came up the street, and we initially clocked him at fifty-three miles an hour. He did slow down when he went between the two vehicles, to forty-seven. Okay? So, there are those then, and probably those now. And the only way we could handle that is if you can, in this particular instance, get a time zone and get an officer out there to look at it. But here again, I think we can do, do the speed study and get a good feeling on what's going on out there without engaging an engineering firm.
I'd like, I'd like to say something, I, I have great empathy for you, because I do live in a neighborhood area where our speeding was, is pretty severe. And we have recently put in twenty-mile-hour signs. It has helped, however, what really helps are people who are walking their dogs, communicating with our neighbors, raising the awareness that speed is a real issue. Because a lot of people who aren't on those streets all the time don't under, don't know that there's a speeding issue. But those who are observing on a regular basis certainly do. And we have helped the speeding, however, the fact is, if people want to speed, they're gonna speed. I don't care if you have a sign up there or anything else, and we are not, we can't have a, you know, we cannot have it policed so people can speed and not get tickets. But I do appreciate it, and I do know that if you get your neighbors involved, as I know you are, you can help lower that speed.
Two points or questions, I guess. One is, the one thing I haven't heard talked about yet, and I don't, I don't know the cost of doing something like this, is to put up those signs that we see like on Marshall Creek and, and the runoff part saying, you know, slow children at play and stuff like that. Those reminder signs, as I, I call them. That's something that I would like to see an option for. Yeah, but still just a reminder. Yeah. The, the second thing that I'll say, and, and I'm gonna speak very personal here, because I'm, I'm very emotionally attached to this for a lot of reasons. One is, this is where I live, in this neighborhood. Second is that I've had speeding affect, you know, my life, and, and I've lost a loved one because of somebody speeding through a neighborhood. I see three red dots in the Highlands area. So if I took the, the, the one seventy-five multiplied by three, I'm quick now, five twenty-five, right? Just to do that neighborhood, the traffic's doing five twenty-five, I'll tell you what, right now, I will get my checkbook out right now. I'll do it, just for that neighborhood. It means that much to me.
Well, I think that we, we have some, another option to do the study, and one of the things is, I believe that we, if we do study, it has to be for the, all the whole town, well, nevermind. Let me let the speakers, we had two speakers, Steve Gutierrez? Gutierrez, did I say it right?
I get it wrong sometimes, too. Good evening, Mayor, town council members and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak in front of you again. I, I initially started the petition, just for clarification purposes, because I don't want my house egged or anybody throwing rocks at my home. We are not Texas natives, I'm from Southern California originally. We've been here for a little over a year now, and we're starting to love this, this beautiful state very, very much. But for all the naysayers out there, my kids play in the backyard. My children play with my wife and I. My, my children, who are six, five, and two years old, never go in the front yard without my wife and I. So, out of the hundred and eighteen people that signed this petition in a relatively short period of time, my son and I, my eldest child and I, who are six years old, we got seventy signatures in one day. We would have gotten a lot more if I was a little bit more persistent. But I picked Football Day, and people were barbecuing and doing other things, so. My baby boys are very precious to me, but that's not why I started this petition. And I told the council last time, we were on Morgan, having a conversation with a friend, an adult, who stopped over as my wife and my baby boys were walking east on Morgan Street, and she parked her vehicle facing in the rightward direction. And we had a speeder come by as she was backing back up towards the driver's side of her vehicle, and almost smacked her, I had to go out and grab her. And it was horrific. And as I was having that conversation with her, we were also talking with some other friends who, ironically enough, have a two-year-old little girl and, and a new year, a new baby, a new baby girl as well. And we started talking about the speed limit in the area, and we're like, you know what, this is an issue, people are going too fast in our neighborhoods. So the very next day, I got a petition together and started going out. It's not about lowering the speed limit in the entire town of Trophy Club, that, that is not my goal. It is not my goal to bankrupt town council, or, or, I don't want to spend two hundred thousand dollars on signs and studies and, and all that other stuff, that's unnecessary. And, and to Chief Niffen's credit, and, and to his, his officers' credit, I can guarantee you, when you go down Trophy Club Drive, doesn't matter what time it is, you're driving thirty miles an hour, and in fact, you're probably driving twenty-eight. So essentially, for me, this is about two things. Number one, it's about safety, it's not about just the safety of the children, because my baby boys are safe, they know better. Daddy will whoop their behind if they go out in the street, if we're not there. And if we're not out in the front, we're in the back. But it's about the safety of every resident of Trophy Club. You know one reason that we moved to this coun, this, this town? Is because I heard what a wonderful prestigious town this was. Everybody said, hey, everybody that used to live in South Lake is coming to Trophy Club. It's nice, it's safe, and that's where you can raise a family. Most of that, just a little background, doesn't apply to me. I worked for the railroad, we've made four moves in the last six years, so chances are in the next eighteen months, we're gonna be popping smoke, we're gonna be gone. Okay? I don't want to go. My wife has grown to love this place, I'm really starting to like it, too. But it's about the safety of our residents, I want people to come to this. I, I read something on our, on our webpage, that Trophy Club is the eighth-largest growing town in Texas. Don't know if that's true or not, but I can guarantee you, people want to come here because it's safe and it's a place to raise a family. So yeah, children are gonna run out in the street, they're gonna go catch a ball every once in a while, they're gonna be on the sidewalk and cross the street with a bike. It's inevitable, it's gonna happen, and when I was a kid, I did it. But you know what, things are different. We have about two billion more people that live in this world than about a hundred million more that live in this country now. Our streets are not as wide as they used to be, they're getting thinner, people are on cell phones, they're distracted with modern technology, we are a busier world, we are busier people, and quite honestly, we don't pay attention like we used to. So all I want to do is increase safety and bring people situational awareness. An enforcement issue, like you mentioned, you're doggone right. People drive thirty miles an hour because there's signs up there, they drive thirty miles an hour because they know they're gonna get a ticket if they won't not be done in one second. If there's not speed limit signs posted, people are gonna drive thirty-five, they're gonna drive forty. So, I appreciate you taking a, a look at this, I appreciate you getting on the agenda so quickly, I'm sorry I spoke for so long, I'm assuming that beep was for me to shut up. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dina Boudreaux?
Hello, Mayor, council, I appreciate the time that you're giving us. I don't have a dog in this race. I don't have kids small enough that I need to worry about whether or not they're safe in the streets. And, Mr. Hoover said, when I was a kid, we didn't play in the street or we got our butt whipped. Excuse my French. But I am here to support Steve and the other hundred and seventeen petitioners that were there, and And what I'm wondering, and Clint alluded to this, is if this is something that this particular neighborhood wants, can we not raise the funds within that particular neighborhood? And it'd still be lawful to do the traffic study? Or to do whatever is necessary to change the speed limit in that neighborhood? And that's, that's something, I mean, I, I, I don't think the intention was, and he, Steve had said this, the intention was not to change it town-wide, and we frankly, were surprised to see it looked at town-wide. We just wanted to do something in our neighborhood. We were not looking to cost other taxpayers any money. So we're just looking at what is lawful to cha- you know, how do we go about changing it there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think any, uh, anyone had any intention of looking at it town-wide.
It was surprising.
Kind of the question comes up, and now we have to look at what the best way to handle it is. One of the recommendations, uh, that wa- was made was to look at it on a neighborhood basis, which I think actually makes sense. Because I've been standing on Morgan, or Broadway, one of them.
Broadway.
When, when somebody came around that corner, and I know exactly what you're talking about. And it is a problem, there is no question. What we have to do is, I, I don't think any of us are, well, I can't, are ready to support twelve-thousand dollars worth of study, I certainly am not. But I do, I think your idea of, um, of an in-house, of using those signs that we have to do the in-house study? Because you know what those signs also create more awareness? You know, when, when we put that sign up, I know it does for me.
I can tell you what, when I go to South Lake and I drive Carroll, they have that thing out there. I, I go thirty on Carroll, and it's, and part of it's because of that sign.
But that's kinda the problem, too, trusting that with the study, cause I, I mean, I'll, I'll maybe incriminate myself here. I mean, uh, they, Roanoke just did one there at Marshall Creek and, um, wherever that lane is right there. Before we get to Tom Thum, that stop sign, or not Tom Thum, the Walmart, right there, that stop sign. And, uh, I slowed down, cause I saw that sign. So, but it's clocking me at that point, so we do that study, where everybody's gonna slow down for the study, and then we take the thing out, and they're gonna be going forty miles per hour again.
Well, then we go with the enforcement side and the presence that, that, uh, Manager Sly brought up, which I think is valid, although, and we certainly won't, it's kind of like our hotspots on the, you know, with the flooding. But at the same time, we have to recognize that our police can only spread so far.
Right, right.
Yes. Because that's the thing, is people know that they're gonna stop, get stopped on Trophy Club Drive, so they don't speed. That's the problem.
I was just gonna mention, you mentioned it, but back when I lived in that other town that we don't talk about, Bill.
That's worse, yeah.
We, uh, we spent a lot of time, uh, putting up those portable signs, the speed signs. And you'll notice now, if you drive through South Lake, on a lot, a lot of the major streets over there, they're permanent now. They have the smaller ones. And if you talk to the police department over there, the, the, just the awareness. There's even a comedian that puts out a, uh, thing about that, that says, people always slow down, and they do immediately slow down because it's an awareness thing. I believe in my heart, if we get an awareness program going, April can handle that, but I think we need to have, I think we just need to have a hard crackdown. And I do believe we should look at our schedule of fines. Are we finding them enough that it makes a difference? And, uh, unfortunately, the people that are speeding in these neighborhoods are people that live there. Those aren't pass-through people, those are the people that live in the town.
It's, it's, it's been my observation, at least, and this is just during my times I can look, it's about fifty-fifty of tro- Trophy Club residents versus non-Trophy Club residents, cause we have a lot of construction workers coming through there. We got a lot of, um, temporary workers coming through there, you know, coming to the house to do, you know, quick jobs for painting or for fence repair or whatever. It is some residents, yeah, I won't deny that, but it's, it's, I'd say it's a fifty-fifty split.
I'm sorry, did we, we kinda got off on you. It's okay. No, I, I apologize, but I, I wasn't quite done. My question is on enforcement, which I'm all in favor of. But quite frankly, if we only have two officers and a supervisor on duty all day to cover the entire Trophy Club area, I can't see committing, realistically, one officer to Morgan or Broadway. And that's where, Morgan's the worst of it, Broadway's the second worst of it. I, I, I guess I'm having a problem logistically seeing how that can be done, cause.
Well, bear in mind, if we change the speed limit signs, they're only as good as anyone knowing that they're going to be enforced.
Right.
So it's the same thing, in my mind, and you're right, we, we have that, so I mentioned before, have a limited number. However, we can move people around to create that greater awareness at, on occasion, and perhaps Chief can help me out here.
I, I mean, I just can't understand why we just cannot, pretty quickly, put that monitoring sign up there and go at it, and start, and giving people a reason to slow down.
And if you'll pardon me, that monitoring sign is a great idea, except that it's a temporary bandage. Once they don't see that monitoring sign, they go back to their speed limit, or to their, their.
Well, if they see it enough, I think it begins to.
And community involvement, I, I think you brought this up, we did, we have been involved. We've gotten out there and we've, you know, tried to notify these drivers in a nice, nice way, by, you know, let them know, you're speeding. At one point, one of them got out and confronted the person who said, you're speeding. So, we, all that was asked for was an enforceable lower speed limit. But if we can enforce common sense, more power to you. I think it's common sense to enter a neighborhood at twenty miles an hour. But that's my common sense, it's not gonna be y'all's, or, I mean, you know, another person. I don't know how y'all do, but. All right. So, anyway, we appreciate your time, we appreciate the fact that you even considered this. Um, again, I just wanna stress to everybody, we were not looking for town-wide change, and we were not looking to spend the town's money. Not like that, so.
Thanks.
Just one other education point on speed, and I didn't bring my little, little wheel this evening, aviation. The time that you will save over the short distance in the town between going thirty and twenty-five is not very much. At not, you were, we're talking a minute or seconds. And so when you do that, you have to turn around and say to yourself, was it really worth it? Me doing thirty mile an hour down that street rather than twenty-five when I hit that kid?
Well, and, and it was also brought up, Bill, or excuse me, Mr. Rose, that, uh, twelve thousand dollars versus a child's life, of course.
I don't, yeah.
If it was chosen to go town-wide, you know, again, we, we look at possibly doing it ourselves.
But maybe we can look at one area. Maybe we can look at one area and see how, and, you know, like a, like a test, test base, you know, do the study, see what you come up with.
And, I'll just add, I don't wanna sign in my yard, but I'll do what I can to support my neighbors.
There's a lot of, uh, legal aspects we have to understand, but we do have another speaker.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Pearl Ford?
I'm rising to see if we can get some cooperation among the various groups. I understand that Highlands have a homeowners association.
Homeowners Association, is what, yeah.
They have a homeowners association.
Correct.
Some of the education expense for awareness, like the sign someone suggested, that go slow children in the area, those kinds of signs. Let me just give you guys, everybody else know, but maybe you don't know. At one time, there was only one homeowners association in the Town and Trophy Club. It was called the Community Improvement Association, CIA. When I was not saying I was the president of that homeowners association. So, that's why I'm familiar with what the homeowners association can and cannot do, although some of the laws changed recently. I would, but, would go to work with the police chief, the town manager, and the homeowners association to see if some of the expense for the, the, uh, educational awareness signs that need to, to go up, could be expensed through the homeowners association. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you, Pearl.
Thanks. And, uh, Mr. Gutierrez?
I'll be brief, cause most, most of the points that I was gonna make, uh, have been touched upon already, but, um, quite honestly, uh, you know, you guys, we're, we're talking about this thing, and to your point, uh, Mr. Shorter, if, if we need to do that, if we need to fund this project just for our, our subdivision, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to raise the money or split it with you, brother. So, uh, i- it's okay with me. And quite honestly, it, from a, a real allocation perspective, um, with the two officers that we have on duty in, in Trophy Club, I mean, that's not really realistic. However, if we do put that sign up that shows how, how fast you're going, um, and then for three or four days after that, you hit people with a, and you cite a couple of people, then you'll get the word across. So, again, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, I think you've.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so, I, I don't know, I guess we're not needing a motion, we're just needing to give Town Manager Sly a direction, is that correct? I, I would say the direction is, let's go ahead and put up the town-owned speed detector sign, I'm not sure the identical term is there, but. And then let's, um, afterwards, as was Jeffrey recommended, you know, kind of keep enforcement up and running, and let's write some tickets.
And, and we can get the results back off of that.
And then, yeah, we can get results.
I'd like to see them.
Yeah.
And, Glenn, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna make some, uh, general comments here briefly. First, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, you can't put a price on a child's life, so, whether it's ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever. But I do, same time, believe we need to be good stewards of our funds, and there's other ways that you can help curb this without going through a lot of expense. I think you heard most of the answers early. There is no problem, cause since most of these speeders are during the day, that cars just happen to get parked along the street. And you can create an obstacle course that you possibly can't go thirty miles an hour. Also, like I said, with the signage that, uh, that the town has, it's a trailer-mounted sign unit, it's fairly large. There are signage deals that, that aren't a whole lot of expense, and I think many people have seen them. Gets this traffic sign, there's a radar gun with it, posts out, does the same thing. It can be either portable mounted or fixed-mounted, and I'm sure Ed Hilton can certainly work in that direction, especially, again, if the HOA wants to consider possibly helping fund that. The other is, is like I said you just heard, you've got everybody that lives there. You have cameras, you got cellphones, picture of a license tag, somehow gets the police department, may be aware. Who knows, message can get communicated around, and/or on Facebook or, or whatever. And like I said, the, just the local awareness and presence can slow people down. And then, along with, I believe, the chief's assistance, and like I said, of, of presence, uh, and awareness in the town, go through that, you can greatly reduce, Pearl, cause like I said, nobody has any business going down any, as far as I'm concerned, any of the side streets in town at thirty miles an hour period. It should be, you should safely travel, if you're a, you know, a ware driver, probably no more than twenty-five. And, and if kids are present, you should be driving fifteen or twenty, as Councilman Rose said. I mean, you're not gonna gain that much time going two blocks or four blocks at thirty-five miles an hour versus fifteen. And if it's that important to you, why don't you just choose another route and then get out on the main thoroughfares, where, A, it's a little safer, but, uh, Chief Niffen and his officers will remind you about the speed limit there, too, so. Anyway, I think you have some options out there to consider, and I think, uh, Council, uh, Council, uh, Town Manager Sly has got enough direction from council here to come up with some options to assist.
When you do, if, if, if we had designated a certain crackdown period, can we not get some, also some officer support from the county sheriff, and maybe from the constable to come over here and write some tickets, too?
We can certainly ask.
I think if we, I mean, if we're gonna have a concerted effort and have a crackdown for a period of time, uh, ask, uh, to coordinate it with some outside agencies, we still get paid on those, don't we?
The tickets would be filed in our court.
Yes, okay.
I think that, I think you've got a lot of ideas.
There you go.
I think that we, we should also consider, um, the educational aspect, perhaps even with, you know, some of our, like the Fourth of July and some other Arbor Day and things like that, maybe we can do some education in those venues, and, um, hmm? The Neighborhood Watch, that's a really good idea. Um, I, this is weird, really weird, but I read recently that a cellphone has a, um, they have, you know, they have apps for everything, and they can measure everything, and one of them was a speed.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's a GPS.
If somebody measures that, is, you can't do anything with that, right?
No, it's not legal enforcement.
I don't think you're making an app add, uh, app to court.
I just thought I'd check. The other thing is, I think we need to know for sure, what, you know, is it possible to do something in one, on one street? And one, we need to understand that particular legal issue, not, like, the second, but we need to understand. So that if we chose, if we said we wanted to do something on that street, is that possible? So, um, I think that's.
Oh, and Mr. Gutierrez? We understand you're not a native Texan, but thanks for getting here as quick as you could.
Did you have the answer, or?
Well, I mean, you can do a speed study on any street that you determine it's appropriate to do a speed study on. I think one of the reasons that they were looking at, staff was looking at globally, was because it's not the first time we've been asked this, and if you do it in one area, then other people are gonna wanna know, and there's sort of an economy of scale to do the whole town versus, you know, piecemealing it together. But you can certainly do any portion of the town that you believe is in need of a study.
Okay. Well, I personally think we should try some of these other things first.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you all.
To be continued.
All right. Okay, item number ten, consider and take appropriate action regarding the adoption of council goals and objectives for two thousand thirteen. Um, Mike?
Yeah, Council, um, I included in your packet, um, that strategy map that is hidden by all the stacked chairs. And I say that purposely because we're gonna change that location. If nowhere else, maybe on these wing walls, somewhere where it's a little more visible. The councils, and prior councils have done a tremendous amount of work to get, to get to where we're at. And what I included in your packet was, uh, what we refer to affectionately as the hits and misses of initiatives and objectives that you had identified back in two thousand and eleven, and whether or not we were getting it done, or it was caught up in, you know, you know, we were, we were working on it, but couldn't get, couldn't say that it was being done, that it was accomplished, or those issues that hadn't even gotten off the ground yet. And I gave you two thousand and eleven, and then I gave you, again, those same hits and misses, uh, in January of two thousand and thirteen. Even though the document said two thousand and twelve, it was just, it's actually, that's where we're at today with those hits and misses. And I would hope that you would have taken those two documents and done a quick comparison. To say we've come a long way, baby, is an understatement. What I would hope that you would consider doing tonight is adopting the strategy map. I think the strategy map is a rock-solid document, um, with, uh, with those same goals and objectives, with a, with a commitment by me to get you guys in an, uh, in a retreat setting to flesh out these initiatives, because, you know, initiatives change over time. Uh, and what may be, what may have been important to you back in two thousand and eleven is either accomplished, and you've got other issues that you'd like to add to this document. I, I think it would be a very appropriate thing to do, would be to get the council together, uh, in a, in a concentrated environment to re- to revisit this hit and misses kind of thing, and kinda identify what those new initiatives might be for us moving forward. But as you're all aware, the charter dictates that you have to adopt the, the goals and objectives, uh, in January. And, and if you're willing to do that, uh, what you've got is a commitment from me to find a time, and that's gonna be the tough, tough part, is finding a time amongst you six that you can all participate, and let's, uh, And let's refocus on these hits and misses spreadsheet. I'm very, very proud of our staff and of the council to, to have made those improvements that we have over the last couple of years. And I'm just as excited about fleshing out those new initiatives based on things that you've heard at the Vision Committee and everything else that you, all, all of that input that you're getting. I think we can really hit a home run with that. So my recommendation to you would be to adopt the goals and objectives moving forward with that commitment that I just articulated.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to re-adopt the goals and objectives, the strategy map from previous year.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by Council Monroe, seconded by Councilman Mayor. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to briefly touch on the Town Manager's comments as it relates to the hits and misses chart. I think it's critically important that we go back and walk our way through that. I didn't know if we were gonna do that tonight, and I've got about six items that I'd like to discuss adding to that. So, and it, and it's a critical, as I look at the importance of that particular document is, it becomes a key player in the budget. More even, it's more, more focused than just goals and objectives.
Well, sure, it's, it's the next, yeah.
It's the next layer down. And so I would look forward to doing that in short order.
Yes.
Anybody else have a comment? Concerned? I, I agree with that, and I, I had some questions on those two, which I will save for a meeting. But I do think this, this, you know, we've got the goals and strategies, and this is the thing that makes it real. And, and that's the part that I think is real important.
I guess I would also say this document is really good, and we only see it once a year.
That's a good point.
And so I'm wondering if we ought to see it once a month, because it clearly is where we are directing our attention, our finances.
We could certainly put it in the supplemental packet.
I just, it's really good.
Might be something useful to have posted on our website, too.
You could even kind of weight it in terms of how far along are we?
Could be pinker. Okay. All right. Anybody else? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Item 11. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the town council meeting scheduled for March 2013 and April 2013.
Council, the, we put this on the agenda because of our last meeting. We had some discussion. The, the March scheduled meetings in March are, are the 4th and 18th. The school's spring break period is the week of the 11th. So it would be our recommendation that we not change anything in the month of March. And with the, with the recognition and understanding that we've already moved the February, last meeting in February to the last week. And it's just gonna, at some point, we gotta get caught up, right? So we'll, we'll just bite the bullet and get it done. And, and meet the 4th and the 18th as anticipated. The month of April has five Mondays. And that will certainly allow for the staff to get our breath back with that extra Monday in there. But we would be expected to meet, according to the charter, on the 1st and 15th. And I have no conflicts whatsoever with any, with those two dates. I guess my only thought there would be during the month of April, we generally have your three appointed officials' performance reviews prior to the council, prior to the May election. So I know that we'll have those three events on the, on the agenda. You may want to consider moving the April 15th date to the 22nd. Only because, you know, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I dare not anticipate what kind of election season we have. But certainly with a couple of special elections on the horizon, it may behoove you to meet closer to the election date. I don't know why I say that, but. You know, if you would, if you want to consider moving the 15th and 22nd, that's fine. I don't know that we have any conflicting or competing events during that timeframe. If you want to leave it at the 15th, leave it, leave it as the 1st and 15th, and we're, we're ready to rock.
Anybody have a desire to?
Or your also suggestion to move the. April 1st to the 8th, then? So you do two weeks apart. You do the 8th and the 22nd. And then you're gonna have two weeks from the 22nd to May 6th. So then you're kind of meeting every, every two weeks.
Well, and, and that would be okay, and, and what just occurred to me is I think Easter weekend is the 31st of March. So that, you know, for, for you guys and staff who might be out of town, that may be. That may, that may be a better play, exactly. So you may want to consider 8 and 22 April for meeting dates.
Well, if others don't have conflict, I guess we need, that needs to come in the form of a motion, correct?
It does. Yes.
So Mayor, if I may, I move that we move the regularly scheduled meetings in April from the 1st and the 15th to the 8th and the 22nd, the 2nd and 4th Mondays.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Strather, seconded by Councilman Schrader. Any discussion? All in favor? We're good? Okay.
Is there any need to say anything regarding March motion?
No, we didn't change March. Right? We didn't change it. Okay. Okay, item 12. Consider and take appropriate action regarding financial invariance report dated November and December 2012, including first quarter Trophy Club Park financials. Mr. Edgar Lara.
Okay, just going over the general fund, I'll just cover this real quickly for December. I think the only thing major that needs to be discussed would be an expenditure in the Finance Department with regards to temporary help that was used to help us get caught up on our bank reconciliations. As you know, last, well, the last two years, we've, we've done two software conversions. And, you know, we recently made another change because of an, of an issue with the previous software. So when dealing with those issues and, and the staff that we have, staffing level we have in Finance, we felt it necessary to bring someone in to help us get caught up. We are caught up now with our bank reconciliations, so that was good. So that was an expense that, that was not previously budgeted. Revenues, nothing really, a lot to say with regards to revenue. Sales taxes is about where it should be. I did want to show you though, however, and you saw in, in your December numbers, and I gave you some updated numbers on the dais, printed out copies of specifically Trophy Club Park. We followed up with the request to provide kind of a quarterly outlook on expenditures associated with Trophy Club Park that are not housed within the Trophy Club Park budget. This first slide is, as you see, we provided a little bit more detail, and we will do that going forward every month for Trophy Club Park. Breaking the, and let me make this a little bit bigger. Let's see if I can make it a little bit bigger. Trying to give you categories as opposed to just department-level data with regards to Trophy Club Park, because there are a lot of expenditures that are budgeted in Trophy Club Park associated with this operation. That's where it's always been housed. So personnel, purchase services, things like that, supplies. But in addition to this report, we were asked to compile certain other data that is discussed. Apologize, that is discussed down here. And just briefly, like I said, I, I want to touch on this because this is new. What, what we were directed to do was to try to capture, or at least give some data with regards to services that are provided to Trophy Club Park that are not budgeted in their budget. Included in that, as, as Town Manager Sly asked us to do, was additional workers from the Parks Department whose salaries and benefits are not budgeted in Trophy Club Park, that sometimes have to go out and do maintenance. You saw in the backup that there's an explanation from Parks Director Adam Adams about detailing some of that work that's done and the costs associated with it. There, I found Town Manager Sly and I, he pointed out some mistakes that were in the math, so it's been corrected. It's on your, on the printout. But the, the unit calculation for the time spent there does include benefits. I want that to be known, that it, it does include benefits. So that was included in this extra revenue and expenditure report that I'm about to show you. Additionally, I had a conversation with Chief Danny Thomas with regards to Trophy Club Park and the services they do out there. And he made me aware of the fact that, now, I wasn't previously aware of this because it's not in our budget. The Fire Department receives a portion of revenue from Denton County for servicing Trophy Club Park. If we didn't service Trophy Club Park, we would not come into that revenue. We don't see it though, because it goes to the Municipal Utility District. It's always difficult when you're compiling this kind of data to separate EMS from fire, because they're the same. They really are. It's very difficult. So Chief Thomas and I had a discussion about that, and we thought it, it needs to be included. It's hard to, to exclude it. So if, if you come back and you ask me, well, where does that hit the general fund? It doesn't. It hits, it hits the Municipal Utility District. With regards to expenditures.
Let me just say one thing about that. You know, too many times we hear, it doesn't really matter. It, it's a taxpayer dollar. So what we're trying to capture here is, is an additional schedule that provides you a picture of how much monies, public monies, and I don't care if it's mud-colored or town-colored, or it doesn't matter to me. It's citizen public money that we are, we are using above and beyond the revenues that are generated by the Trophy Club Park to operate Trophy Club Park. Okay, it's, I'd, I'd love to say it's the town's subsidy to the Trophy Club Park, but it's not entirely the town. The mud hasn't got a piece in it. But it's the, it's the citizens' money. So we're not there yet. I, I think we're, we're wrapping our hands around what all is included and what's not. And, and that schedule, that financial schedule for Trophy Club Park, I've asked Michael to be a little more detailed in what those expenses that are paid by TCP funds represent. You know, we've gotten feedback from the community and from the council about this schedule. You know, what about website costs? And what about? All of those kinds of costs are captured and paid for by Trophy Club Park Fund. That's generated, that, that use that revenue generated by Trophy Club Park to pay for. All I'm trying to capture, in addition to that, in this other schedule, is what's being supplemented to TCP. And I think that's what the intent was, was how much money does Trophy Club subsidize TCP operations with? And it's not, and, and so, you know, there, there's a litany of things that you could come up with. What about this, that, and the other? And if it's already captured by the TCP Fund, it's already in the schedule. It's in that TCP financial statement. This new statement will only be those dollars that we can capture and cost out related to our general fund, or the mud, or whoever, whatever public monies it comes from in support of TCP operations. Parks and Rec sanctioned activities in TCP don't count. The argument could be made, if, you know, we had a campout of Parks and Rec sanctioned campout and didn't have TCP to go to, we'd have to pay somebody to have that event. Right. Or we'd have to do it at the dog park or some other place.
Oh, jeez.
So, so, you know, if, if it's a, if it's a fun run sanctioned by the Parks and Rec or an event of some sort, I'm not capturing those dollars. Those dollars are, are budgeted for in the general fund for events. That make sense? So that's where I'm headed.
Let me say this. Town Manager Sly and I met today over this issue. I don't think we have enough detail, and he agreed. I said, I'm not, I'm not smarter than a fifth grader, so I need a financial statement that I can understand. I am not versed in municipal accounting. I am, I am versed in business accounting. And a municipal budget and a business budget and P and L are extremely different. So he has agreed. See, to me, I, I, let me just ask you a question. Those low water crossings, did we fix those during the first quarter? Did we spend any, did we, any of that bond money get spent in the first quarter?
I, I believe it's in the works. I don't believe it's been spent yet.
Nothing's been spent yet, okay. But I just want, in other words, my first lesson in accounting was the man I worked for said, this drawer over here is where, when the money comes in, I put all the money in this drawer. And this, when the bills come in, I put them in this drawer. And when I have to pay the bills, I take it out of this drawer, and whatever's left, I put in the middle drawer. That's my profit or my loss. Either I gotta put some in or take some out. And I need, I want us to, and I think y'all are all probably pretty much like me. I'm not a municipal accountant. And I like to have a better understanding of the direct cost of that park. And so Mike said, okay, I'll accommodate you. I think at the next report, we'll get more information.
Well, I think what you, basically, the, the big picture is you're talking about a program budget. And you've got two different aspects now of funding that works in toward that program budget. So when you look at the total cost, you gotta have both pieces.
I will, I'll say this. Coming from an accountant and coming from finance, there's a major difference between governmental funds and private sector. And one of the things that you have to keep in mind is some of these costs that we're tracking are fixed, regardless if you have TCP or not. Police, fire, they won't go away if TCP goes away. I'm just, I'm just making a point. I'm just making a point.
Mike gave me that argument today. Mike gave me that argument today. And that's like saying that the war in Afghanistan doesn't cost us anything because we have to maintain the military anyway.
No, that's not true.
It is the same. You can't say, we do have a fixed cost. But let me ask you this. I'm gonna make this argument, and I'm gonna keep making this argument. Trophy Club Park, we have a fixed cost to maintain our assets. Trophy Club Park is a leasehold. It's not an asset. The money that we put in there, we can never get back out of it. We put it in to maintain, to make it, it is an expense hold. That's fine, if that's what we want. But would we, because we maintain a police department, and we were real good friends with Roanoke, and they need some police for two or three days, we just go give it to them for free? Would we do that? I don't think so. We would be happy to help them, but we would charge for that service.
But we, we spend a lot more money on our, on our own park, on the parks we do have.
Mayor, you and I have this discussion every time. We own those parks. They are an asset, and the citizens of this town own those parks. They do not own Trophy Club Park.
But they use it.
As do.
So you're getting the use.
Well, I will say this. I will say this. Town Manager Sly has given us, you know, marching orders. We will capture the data as best as we can. And, you know, as we get more detailed, I think, like I said, it's, it's, it's a work in progress. So to, to figure out exactly what you're looking for, you know, if, if there's any, you know, capital improvements to the park or any expenditures like that, it's being captured. I assure you of that. So going forward, like I said, we're, we're gonna keep improving. So going forward, like I said, we're, we're gonna keep improving. Let me show you real quick, just so everyone can get a feel for what we're talking about here. That, this is what's in, in our general ledger system associated with Trophy Club Park. It's, it's a report that shoots right out fees associated with coming in and budgeted amounts that, you know, that we've stated. And if, as far as what we've budgeted, you have line item detail in the budget. The adopted budget has line item detail, just, just so you know. It's not by category or anything like that. It's line item. But if I come down here and, and these are quarterly numbers, this is an estimate of approximately how much we would have received quarterly from Denton County. You know, like I said, this is mud, this is mud revenue. This is not revenue to the town. And this is approximately what we receive for transporting someone in an ambulance. We haven't received this money.
From TCP.
From TCP. This was a transport that was associated with TCP. So that'll show you how much revenue we anticipate getting. We have not received it yet.
We call that accounts receivable.
Yes, that's right. That's right. We call that accounts receivable. That's exactly right. Expenditures, we did have a, and like I said, Mr. Sly will, will give us more direction as to what to capture. But with regards to this report, we only captured, um, dispatch calls to TCP. We didn't capture patrol, just dispatch calls, so that we're clear.
I questioned that number. And let me, and I questioned it with Mike today.
Okay.
You supplied a policeman, his car, his gas, uh, his benefits at thirty-nine dollars an hour. We can't, I don't think we can hire a policeman and put him in a car.
Fuel was not included in that calculation. It's just salary and benefits.
Well, he, when he went there, that, got that set up at thirty-nine dollars an hour. And I don't believe, if we could hire a policeman and put him in a car and pay all of his benefits and everything for thirty-nine dollars an hour, we'd have more policemen, I think.
Well, that, I, I assure you that number came from the salary worksheet for salary and benefits, and it's an average between a sergeant and a patrol officer.
And a car.
We did not calculate depreciation on, upon a vehicle.
They didn't walk to Trophy Club Park, did they? When they were called?
But we, but- But you realize-
I'm just making, I'm just making a point. To, to capture the number, you have to be realistic. And thirty-nine dollars an hour. I, I realize you're cat, you're taking it from salary and benefits, but unless he's gonna walk up there and leave, leave the entire resources of the town here, it's thirty-nine dollars an hour is not real.
The thing, the thing that, uh, part of that is, just take the police for example. He's protecting the, the park. He's protecting the residents or whoever is in the park. And every park, whether it be Trophy Club Park or any one of our internal parks, have both residents and non-residents. And the police protect them all. The EMS and Fire protect them all. It doesn't matter, you know, whether you are or not. I use Trophy Club Park a lot. I'm entitled to, to my tax money being spent on what I use as well as anybody else.
But you have to capture the expense of the park.
The only thing I would, I would say at this point is, I just, I would hope that the time associated with capturing the data would not exceed the benefit of the data. That we don't want to go so far as to use administrative time to capture data.
Not suggesting that, but I'm saying that there's a realistic number that you can associate with a per hour. I, I have no, I, I am not suggesting, I am not suggesting that you, that a policeman start a time sheet and I drove through Trophy Club Park one time and it took me seventeen minutes.
Right.
I'm saying that there is a standardized cost per hour, per officer for-
And we can refine that number.
And it's greater than thirty-nine dollars an hour because there's more involved than just your salary and benefit.
Like I said, this is a work in progress and we'll refine those numbers, both for Parks and the Police and Fire.
Yep.
Maybe we'll need to break it down for a little bit.
I understand where you're going. All right. I understand your question. My question for you would be, when you're calculating management overhead for those officers, do you want it to extend all the way up to the town manager?
I believe that, yes.
No, I, I, let me, let me share with you.
He knows that I believe that.
Let me share with you what we've done.
He, he, but he promised me there would be a staff allocation for that.
There is, there is a line item in the current TCP fund budget that is a function of gross revenue for administrative overhead. We took a function, and I can't remember what it was back in the, you know, whether it's four percent of gross revenue to be transferred to the general fund for administrative overhead. I, I'm not gonna document my time. I'm not gonna ask Adam to document his time. It's a function of gross revenue for general administrative overhead.
Have I asked you to document time? I have not asked you that, have I? I said, just come up with a rate, with a, with a per hour for, and make it work.
We'll refine it. We'll refine it.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the, uh, November and December financials?
I don't know. Have you completed your total report for November and December?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the only thing left was just a, a description Adam attached and you saw in the backup.
I saw that.
So, in, in your motion, you might want to include the fact that you have something on your dais as far as being updated, so.
Mayor moved to approve the, uh, November, December financials, uh, as presented and as at the dais.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been, uh, made by Councilman Strather, seconded by Councilman Rose. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. All right, Town Council Liaison Updates. Um, Mr. Schrader, Councilman Schrader, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec meeting, January eighth. Long meeting, but it was really on one topic. So I'll kind of talk about this one topic. The one topic was the revisions or potential revisions, I should clarify, uh, to the park ordinance. Staff went through about fifteen different cities and their ordinances, found things that were applicable to Trophy Club. Uh, the processes, uh, after the P and R Board looked it over on January eighth, they were gonna meet also with the sports associations, uh, to make sure that things, uh, meshed with what they were trying to accomplish. Uh, police would look it over. And then it will become before council, and I believe we're looking at that in the first meeting in February. Is that correct?
Second.
Second meeting in February.
Well, there'll be a workshop and then-
Okay, workshop, then, yeah, sorry. Um, so I don't want to go into too many other specific details about what they're proposing, because you'll hear about that in the workshop. A couple, one thing that I found really interesting in light of the discussion we had earlier today, uh, speed limit in the parking lots at all the parks will be fifteen miles per hour. Okay. Outside of the ordinances, uh, I can't remember who it was, but it was one of the, it may have been Danny, asked me, uh, about the proposed playground at the end of Trophy Club Drive, uh, that the, builder was gonna help fund and all that, that should be a go. Things are looking for, for that. Uh, and then there was an interesting statistic that Kathy Trump presented, um, in her presentation about TCP and all that. Uh, on the use of the nature trail for fiscal year twenty-twelve, uh, the total number of heads, and heads are clarified by horse or, or human, captured, and this is not a scientific number because it's captured via a camera that just shudders every once in a while, but the number was ten thousand eight hundred heads. Projection for twenty thirteen based off of first quarter, uh, heads is twenty-one thousand two hundred. So interesting.
I know there are a lot of people that, that did the race.
Yeah.
You know, residents.
Those numbers, yeah.
They're like, I've lived here and I never knew this was here. They're now out there more.
So that's the update from the, uh, Parks and Rec meeting. I do want to mention just a couple of things outside the Parks and Rec meeting, um, just local sports stuff. Uh, boys' basketball team is still doing pretty well, so if you haven't got a chance, go out and see them over at Byron Nelson. Go out and see them. They're still state ranked, uh, state ranked. And then, uh, this weekend was kind of an interesting weekend. Uh, I went and watched the soccer tournaments for the Boys and Girls JV and Varsity. And all four teams won their tournaments. And I, I couldn't believe that. That was special, so. If you, if you're a soccer fan, we got some great soccer teams over at Byron Nelson. So that's my update.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Tiffany?
Do I need to say more?
I don't think so.
Job well done.
Thank you very much for doing that. Um, EDC four B, uh, Mr. Strather?
Uh, Mayor, uh, EDC met on January fourteenth. Uh, probably the largest thing they did was approve in their budget to take on the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is the calling of the two thousand two bond, which results in a little, just under a quarter million dollars of saving in interest to our residents. And they've taken that, added that in, into their budget. That went along with obviously the election to change their tax rate. Also, there was a need to help with that in a short-term basis, and they agreed to do that. And then the last thing is a, uh, Catalyst Commercial is our consultant that we've worked with for several years, and they've agreed to, uh, get a budget from them to update our market data to, uh, to present. And that's the meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
You want an update on the Mud Pid meeting?
Okay.
It's not agenda, agenda, oh, we can't talk?
It's in Town Manager Sly's update.
I've got it on my agenda.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to, is there any, were there any other council liaison updates? Okay, then, uh, Mr. Sly? Oh, I'm sorry.
May I ask a question of, um, EDCB four B of Glen? May I ask a question? What was the, um, uh, feedback on moving the, um, uh, logo to the high school? Was there any discussion about that?
I'm gonna have to refer that to Steve.
There, we did provide an update to the, um, to the board regarding the, the website implementation and the logo and I, I don't want to put words in their mouths, but I think frustrated with, with, with the process and disappointed that it was being referred to the high school students was probably the best way to capture their sentiment. Had that been the desire of the council, that that should have been the first option done and then gone back to hire a design firm to come up with an option. Um, they were disappointed that the flag logo wasn't adopted and, you know, a couple, several members are also on the Vision Committee and they felt that, that was sort of, uh, that, that with the Vision Committee spending time on it, the council spending time on it, you know, the community spending time on it and, and, you know, no logo was perfect. And that they, they felt that the flag logo was the best one and, and that they had wished that council would have adopted it, but council took different action and, and they'll go from there.
I would mention that it might have been a good idea for them to present something to us about that. And it also didn't go only to the school, right?
We're gonna reach out to the community.
Okay. All right. Mr. Sly's update?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Health Board Quarterly Meeting is this week and Wednesday on. I'll be out of, out of pocket attending that board meeting. This past week, we had, uh, what I thought was a very productive, uh, meeting with the Pid Committee. Unfortunately, Councilman, uh, Schrader was unavailable to attend. Uh, Councilman Mayor, myself, and Patricia represented the town. And if you've got some thoughts, I, I would defer to you.
Well, I would say, uh, in a meeting that lasted about an hour and a half, we agreed, we came to terms and agreed in principle on solving the Mud Pid problem. Their attorney and Pam are now working through, uh, I mean, I, every time I talk about her, I say Pam, Patricia, uh, are working through drafting the documents to, uh, we have to submit those to TCEQ to see if they meet their requirements. And I assume if they meet their requirements, we'll come back to the council with an ILA. But, uh, or a revision to the Pid contract, a new Pid contract, because the one we have is no good. And, uh, move forward from there. But it was very quick, very productive and, uh, uh, we spoke, everybody had frankly spoken. It was pretty smooth.
Yeah. I, I thought it was a very productive meeting and conceptually, what we have, uh, all agreed to, subject to the ownership issue, that will be worked out with the attorneys uh, in this language, this lease ownership issue of, of the infrastructure facility is what we, what TCEQ refers to it as, which means all of the lines and the elevated tower and the, and the lift stations and everything that makes the Pid utility services work is the utility facility. We've got to reconcile the ownership issues. So in principle, what, what the mud has agreed to along with us is a, a long-term lease of that facility uh, with a buyout at the end. And that long-term lease would probably be structured, uh, in accordance with the existing Pid, uh, bond that is still remaining. I think it's twenty-three years left on that Pid bond. So that once it's paid for, uh, it can be owned by the mud in theory. Uh, and, and each year they would pay the town a lease payment for the right to use the, the town or the Pid's infrastructure to provide services to the citizens and they would get all of the revenue from it. Basically, is, is, is that a fair way to succinctly say that?
Be a, we, uh, conceptually, it's a percentage of the water revenue.
Right. Uh, so it was a very productive meeting and, and, uh, we're anxious to see what the attorneys can come up with in terms of that ownership issue because that's the big hurdle with TCEQ.
Mandatory sale at the end is required?
That's just what was discussed. What's next? Community development. I told you earlier this evening, I would share with you some things that are, in addition to what you heard during the workshop with all of those, those other four projects. Uh, we're working currently on a, a Gas Island and Tom Thumb. There is an issue with Medlin needing to be replanted and a site plan at Medlin, Medlin Middle School. And before we can do that, there is a vacation, or we, we, you're gonna be, uh, asked to consider vacating the old Parkview Drive that is now part of Medlin.
I thought we did that.
That's never been vacated.
I thought we did that. We took action on that.
We took action on that.
That was back for an exchange of some other property or something, where the water tower was-
That's never been vacated or filed with the county.
We need to do some research.
We've done the research.
It's not been done.
We've done that research. That vacation needs to be done and we'll do that and then submit a replant and, and site plan of Medlin to you on, on that regard.
And I would only-
It was a land swap, but I don't think it, it wasn't involved in the, it wasn't involved in the room, no.
The vacation has been discussed on several occasions and, and it's not because we haven't pressed them to move forward with it. It's, it's kind of been what's on their list of priorities of trying to get it done. So it's not that we haven't been prepared or haven't pushed the issue. It, it's kind of, where does it fall in terms of school expansions and things like that?
It's on everybody's radar. We need to get this thing cleaned up and, and move forward. Uh, PD twenty-two, which is the Villas, uh, of Hogan's Glen. I, I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, the owner, Scott Beck, this past week and, and discussed several items that fall into the community development world, uh, PD twenty-two being one of them. Uh, we had a drainage issue that they've finally got off dead center and, and, and have resolved, we think. It's in the engineer's office today, uh, being reviewed, but we think that they're gonna create a detention pond. Because what, what had been, uh, planned for initially was just to allow all of that additional storm drainage to sheet flow across the golf course, and we weren't gonna allow that to happen. Uh, and the golf course wasn't real happy about that idea either, so, uh, they've, they've made some additional improvements to that. Uh, and then, and in doing so, there'll be some dedication of properties that are contiguous to Harmony Park- Uh, and in, and in doing so, there'll be some dedication of properties that are contiguous to Harmony Park to the town. Uh, so those things are good things. Met today with, uh, folks representing Standard Pacific, and what they're referring, what they're referring to is, uh, and will mark it as the Isle of Turnberry, which, those of you who are familiar with Neighborhood Four, um, in Turnberry, it's gonna create a, they're gonna have to build a bridge to get to that area, uh, that, that's bordered by the golf course, and it's a hundred-and-eighty-foot spanned bridge, and they've put a pencil to it and have determined that fourteen, they'll have fourteen lots. Uh, and it makes, and it makes good sense for them to do, financial sense for them to do that, so you'll be seeing bridge plans in the very near future. Uh, and they'll, and with the intent of trying to get all of that up and running, and lots to be sold by the end of this fiscal, or end of this calendar year. Very exciting, very, they'll be exclusive, they'll be exclusive lots, well, it's in the PID, so that, we're still talking about type-one lots, twelve thousand square foot minimums. But they're intending to really do it up nice, yeah.
Are those home, are those fourteen lots in those homes, were those included in the original PID allocation numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it gonna gate that, or is it?
It will not be gated, it'll be public access. Twenty-seven-foot wide road, just like any other neighborhood road. Uh, speed limit currently posted at thirty miles an hour. With, with two six- With two six-foot wide sidewalks on either side of the bridge.
Six-foot?
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
So, I, I'm really excited about that. And, and lastly, uh, I'm just kinda rattling off all these things that are bouncing off Carolyn's walls down there. Uh, you know Majestic is under, is, has filed bankruptcy. There has been a, uh, a liquor store that has, they've got, they currently have an SUP that's been approved, it runs with the land. They've got a six-month window to move in, and if, if they can get through the bankruptcy judge and, and all the necessary hoops, uh, we have a, uh, another vendor that will just step right in and pick up where Majestic left off, so. Uh, all of that going on, in addition to all the other stuff that you heard during the workshop, is just indicative of the kind of activity that's going on around the office, despite the fact that we are a walking infirmary. I mean, it is, you know, we've had several, several employees who are now, on their second iteration of some kind of a flu bug of some sort. I mean, it's just, uh, it's hit us hard. And, and we continue to try to keep everybody happy and meet their time schedules along the way, but, uh, it, it has been very difficult. But, but we continue to keep the nose to the grindstone and continue to move forward. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, question two.
Uh, this, this is a question that I don't know if this is the right place, but, uh, I heard that there was another, um, dog park, an incident at the dog park, that's, they broke into the car today.
I have not heard anything about it.
Have you heard any of that?
I heard it over the weekend, but not today.
Well, maybe it was over the weekend, but it, apparently, this is occurring there more than once and more than twice.
Somebody broke into the, I know. We, we did have a break-in. I was not, I was not made aware of that.
At the dog park, it's happening, when, so I don't know what-
You're saying it's happening at a lot of dog parks, not just here too?
Is it?
Seems to be.
So, it's just a, I don't, I never see it come across our-
I'll, I'll ask Chief, Chief Niffen's wife was not feeling well, so she, he, he left early, but I, I will, I'll ask him about it tomorrow.
The, uh, you mentioned a bridge earlier, so it kinda keep my mind. That bridge, we've talked about going from the Highlands, from the trail into the high school. Is there any update on what's happening there, or? Bad, bad timing? Okay, no, thank you.
That's, that's good.
No, no update. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good, though, doesn't it?
Strategy mail.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that's a good one, strategy. Okay, that's it, you're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, item fifteen, Mayor and Council updates regarding training, educational, et cetera. Um, for myself, we had Northwest Communities Partnership, as you said, we're reorganizing it. It was pretty well received, the, the plan we came up with, uh, Dr. Rue and I presented it, and it worked pretty well. Um, we got some excellent additional ideas from people, which is what we were looking for, so. Uh, we're hoping to expand it a little bit, we're reducing our, certainly our dues, which is really good. But, um, we're hoping to expand it to, to bring in perhaps, even if the city can't bring, send a representative that they, or council or, or mayor, that they may send, uh, you know, a, a citizen who might be interested in being involved, because we're trying to build this advocacy for the region. Metropore, um, just, um, there's, the speaker didn't show up, so, uh, that was, uh, we just got an update on the, uh, some of the legislative things, and, um, uh, Tom Breimer did stand up, I thought it was really nice, he really, um, complimented, um, the cities and brought out and wanted to show the example of what we'd worked out with our inter-local agreement on the bridges. So, um, you know, and how it was a really good example of regionalism, so he pointed that out.
And may I make a comment about that? Because I was there also, I, I, I love that, um, meeting, because they always talk about transportation. And I just encourage anyone to go to some of these transportation summits or meetings, because invariably, he said, "Development around transportation hubs." Transportation hubs, they go together. And, uh, it is very important in our particular area. DFW Alliance and all these hubs in between, but I, I just love the transportation. I think that's economic development, and I think that, um, for people to appreciate and to understand the, how it drives our development here.
Were you able to get to the I-35 Coalition?
I didn't make it, I had a con- conflict and couldn't get to that one.
It wasn't on my calendar, I don't know why, but, um, anyway, okay. That's another place that-
I should do that too. I, I, I will, 'cause I really enjoy, 'cause that's, that's the future, I mean, that's the-
I can give a brief update, I'm, well, I'm not of the meeting, but of what's coming down is the, the funding has been approved for the next section of I-35 from thirty on up to two-eighty-seven.
Correct.
And so, that is kicking in gear and into the design sage, and I believe that some construction may start as early as this fall, so.
Yeah, that's-
They also, they also mentioned, yeah, that, and I, I can't, I drive through there every day and I can't quite get myself there, but they said that the connector should be done by June.
I know, this year.
The thirteenth, is there?
So, you know, that, that's-
The DFW connector, now, go out there and look and see all these things that have to be built yet.
Yes, it's, it's kind of a little hard to-
Yeah, hard part, yeah.
Huh?
That year is wrong, not this year. Uh, I've, my understanding is they are approximately a year ahead of schedule, but I think you're looking at December two thousand fourteen.
He said.
And the newspaper had twenty-thirteen in it.
He said the thirteenth, huh?
Yeah, the newspaper said, and the thing is, they started in two thousand ten.
Sometimes newspapers get things wrong, we don't know how.
Or, or, maybe it's just, maybe it's just the section closes the airport.
There can be a piece of that run, I mean, they're, they're connecting the dots, but the whole, the whole thing won't be done.
They started in two thousand ten, and it was supposed to be four years, and they're almost a year ahead of schedule, so that would make two thousand thirteen, although, I, I don't know, I agree.
Getting all those peers is the time-consuming, 'cause then you just start stacking and pouring, it goes pretty fast then.
They did get funding for another piece.
Yeah, fifty million.
Uh, that hadn't been in the original funding, another fifty million dollars for some portion on the north side.
Going up to twenty-four ninety-nine. In Grapevine.
I just care about this piece out here in front of us.
Yeah.
That piece out in front of us is scheduled to be done, according to Andy Eads, and the, I went to the Denton County Precinct Update Meeting, April of this year.
This year?
That's, that's what it says.
That's gonna be a push.
That's what it says, there's a lot of work to be done.
They're gonna need, they're, they're gonna need Mother Nature to cooperate.
Okay.
They're close.
Some of these dates are questionable. Okay. Um, anybody else have anything on that? Okay.
One, I think, well, Mayor, I mean, it hadn't happened yet, but, uh, it happened, February first, Northeast Leadership Forum has the big chin dig at the Hearst Conference Center. Coming up, if that's not on your calendars yet, that's the, the work legend, and Congressman Granger is scheduled to speak, so.
Oh, that's Northeast Leadership you're talking about, in the transportation, which is an excellent, uh, the North, um, North Carolina Transportation Conference is on the fifteenth of February, and, and that's, it's only
I'm gonna go to that.
Like twenty-five dollars to go, if anybody wants to go, and it's excellent information. Okay, item for future agendas. I have one. I would like for staff to take a look at our ethics. You know, um, we had the, the input from the council, uh, from the Charter Committee, and they didn't, they didn't deal with it, but I, I think that was appropriate for them not to deal with it, because I, I think it's something that is in our ordinance, and our ordinance has always bothered me in that it doesn't really attack, it, it attacks, it, it deals with only the financial aspect and not all the other aspects of ethics. Specifically, says it can enforce it. I think we need to take another look at that, maybe look at some other things. So I, I would like staff to take a look at that, and perhaps bring back a recommendation. I, I get nervous when I think about election cycles and know-
It's that time of year.
Good, that, that, Mayor, I agree with that.
Mayor, if we can, I think we can remove item fourteen, since we covered it today.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, yeah. Okay, anybody else have anything for, um, future agendas? Alright.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at nine-thirty-five.